Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone who is attending today's regular city council meeting. It is November 15th, 2021, and I would like to call roll, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Haquez? Absent. Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. Do we have Stacy Swagger in the audience? All right, it looks like we do not have our prayer for today, but let's all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a number of items on our agenda today, and I have a feeling most of you are here for certain items on there. But if you are here to speak about something separate from what's on the agenda, there is an opportunity right now to come and address City Council. Okay, then we will wait until your time comes onto the agenda. Also, an extra reminder, if you do wish to speak about something on our agenda tonight, you do need to go out into the hall or to this table right out here on the side and fill out a form to speak. And give it to Cindy right here at the very end. Thank you. All right. Councilmembers, are there any announcements? Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
We do have a vision committee this Wednesday, the 17th, at 5:00 PM here in these chambers.
Thank you for that reminder. Our last general government meeting, we did not have a quorum. There was only actually two of us that had arrived, so I just wanted to check, will we have a quorum? Are you all going to be able to come? Wonderful, except for Dolly. I think we'll be missing Dolly and Frank on Wednesday, so it sounds like we're good to move ahead. Any other announcements? I would like to announce that City on the Hill is having their ribbon cutting on Wednesday at 9:00 AM. Everyone here is welcome to attend that. Very exciting to have that shop open back up again. And then, I also felt like it was necessary to probably take a moment and recognize that in our community in Canyon City and Fremont County, we've had a lot of our residents and friends and colleagues that have contracted COVID-19, and many dear ones who have passed away recently, as well as unfortunately being in the hospital as well. And so, our condolences to those families who have lost loved ones, and our prayers to those who are suffering through the illness right now, and pray for the best-case scenario, and continue to practice of your own free will and choice, good hygiene and distancing, and when you feel necessary, wearing face masks. I would, though, like to invite President Lion West, if you wouldn't mind coming to address City Council. This is a very big deal for the Lions this year. They are celebrating their 100th anniversary. Now, I did meet some people last Saturday. Lions across the state of Colorado, some of their charters are only 10 years old, but Canyon Cities is 100. So, Wes, why don't you tell us a little bit about what you guys have been up to?
Yes, just to be clear, we're 100 years old, not our members, our club. Our club. And we're only a few years behind the start of Lions International. And Colorado is one of the states that got in early, and Canyon Springs is one of the cities that got in early with the Lions Club. So, it's a real achievement to have 100 years, but importantly, it means we've been serving the community, finding ways to help raise money, to do program, help other groups do programming, to collect and help people with eyeglass issues, eye issues, to have a summer camp that we can send our special needs individuals to every summer. There's so many great things about being a lion. Last night, we heard a great "He Had a Heart of a Lion" speech from Brian, or the person who was one of the chairpeople of our 100th anniversary party. We had the past International President come and recognize our service. The big deal for me tonight is just to thank y'all for the support you've given us and invite you to come have a free lunch with us. Yes, that's right, free lunch. We meet every Tuesday.
There's a lot of free lunches out here. That's awesome.
Free lunch, y'all are invited too. Every Tuesday, come about 12 o'clock, and we'll get you out by 1:00. And you'll have, learn a lot about lions, and you'll have a great time, and it's a great fellowship. So, again, thank you for recognizing all the service we've done, but we're not through. We've got a lot more years to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. What we're going to do is for reading your official proclamation that will be approved by vote of the City Council, we are all going to participate in reading of the proclamation. And so, for this one, if we can start with Councilmember Schmisher and then just work our way down.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Office of the Mayor proclamation, Canyon City Noon Lions, Canyon City Noon Lions 100th Anniversary.
Whereas in 1917, Melvin Jones founded the International Association of Lions in Chicago, Illinois, and?
Whereas the Lions' mission statement is to create and foster a spirit of understanding among all people for humanitarian needs by providing voluntary service through community involvement and international cooperation, and?
Whereas the slogan for lionism is liberty, intelligence, our nation's safety, and?
Whereas Lions Club International has become the world's largest service club organization with 1.35 million members in more than 46,000 clubs in 206 countries and geographic areas, and?
Whereas the Canyon City Noon Lions Club has volunteered time in our community to helping prevent blindness through the donation and collection of eyeglasses to those in need, supporting local youth groups, diabetes awareness, highway cleanup, and other worthy causes, and?
Whereas the Canyon City Noon Lions will be celebrating their 100th anniversary, and?
Whereas the Canyon City Noon Lions Club continues to celebrate among new and longstanding members their proud legacy and commitment to helping others in our community.
Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by Canyon City Mayor Ashley Smish, oh, Smith, I'm sorry, that November 22nd, 2021 is hereby designated as Canyon City Noon Lions Day in honor of the 100 years of service to the citizens and the community of Canyon City by the Lions Past, Present, and Future.
All right, so hearty congratulations to our Lions and their 100th anniversary. I'd like to invite you all to come up in front. We'll take a picture with the council.
Hi there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sure. John?
Thank you. Thank you.
Come on down this way.
Come on down this way.
No, we can see it through.
Yes. Is Ashley, where is Ashley?
She's up there.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, we have another proclamation to read, and that is for Small Business Saturday on November 27th, 2021. And I do know that our small business is, especially downtown, are planning a lot of special activities for that first Saturday after the Thanksgiving holiday. This time, we'll read the proclamation, starting with Councilmember Reed.
Just the whereas. Whereas the government of Canyon City, Colorado celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019, or sorry, yeah, 2000 to 2019, and?
Whereas small business employ 47.1% of employees in the private sector in the United States. 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic, and 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way that they do business to stay open during the pandemic, and?
Whereas 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small. 85% of them also encourage friends and family to do so, too, and?
Whereas 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020, and more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation, and?
Whereas Canyon City, Colorado supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and?
Whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday.
Now, therefore, Ashley Smith, Mayor of Canyon City, Colorado, has the distinct honor of proclaiming November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday, and urges the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
So, thank you, Council, and I'm looking at you, Beth, because you're the only small business owner I see out in the audience. Would you like to say anything?
I didn't know this was, but I am, I do own a small business, and I employ 45 people, and it's been in business for 20 years. And even though I'm not a retail, I don't, I don't sell any, as far as like goods for Christmas, the Small Business Saturday has been increasingly busy, and last year was exceptionally busy. I mean, you could see all the people going shop to shop, starting at the very beginning, people that I'd never seen downtown shopping before. It was very, very successful. So, I really appreciate you recognizing the downtown area, and even though I'm not actually an official part of the groups, I am a small business, so thank you very much.
Thank you for this spontaneous endorsement. Appreciate that. Would you like to get up and address Council as well?
Just as bad as Pam.
You're welcome.
My business partner's not here, but we've been in business for three, coming up three years, and been part of the downtown for two, and we do appreciate everything that you guys do for the downtown businesses, the small businesses throughout Fremont County, and we hope that we can be here for many more years, so, thank you.
Thank you. So, a round of applause for our small businesses. I look forward to seeing everybody on November 27th downtown. That'll be awesome. Ryan Stevens, I'd like to invite you to go over our agenda and consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of Council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on November 1st and the general government minutes for November 3rd. 8B authorizes the mayor to reappoint Gary Clark to the Board of Adjustments. 8C awards bid 4421 for Dell servers. 8D awards bid 4921 for Avalon Video Management Solution to Convergent in an amount not to exceed $26,250. 8E awards bid 5121 Unified Communications as a Service to Ring Central in an amount not to exceed $23,303.47 with a 10% additional contingency for carrier fees. 8F authorizes the order for police department ammunition from Salt Lake Wholesale Sports, which is a state bid, in an amount not to exceed $17,998.40. 8G authorizes the mayor to sign a Water Services Agreement for 602 Cyanide Avenue. 8H is the monthly budget summary. 8I is to receive and file list of bills and P-card list of bills, and 8J is actually something staff would request that you move to the regular agenda, as it does need a separate vote, because there is a resolution attached to it.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Administrator Stevens, I know that some of the language in 8C and D regarding the purchase of the video management solution caught my eye, and I just wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to explain that specifically related to its ability to assist the city in analytics related to contact tracing, face mask detection, and social distancing regulation. So, I just wanted to give you a moment to explain that a bit, because I think it can be somewhat disconcerting without further information.
Sure, absolutely. The, the funds to pay for this equipment is coming from the CARES Act funds, and there are certain requirements that you have to meet in order to expend those funds for this type of equipment. So, having that functionality is one of those requirements. It's not something that we intend to use, as there are no regulations currently that require the use of that, but because it is the federal CARES Act funds, there were some specific requirements that we had to look at or look for in order for these expenses to be eligible.
Any other questions or comments from Council? Like to entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda, an agenda with amendment of moving item J to the regular agenda, probably to item 11 pre-A.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve the consent agenda as written with the amendment of moving item J to 11A.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call of vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Mayor Smith? Oops, sorry.
Thanks for the, for the vote, but it passed unanimously by our councilmembers. Thank you, Council. Ryan, would you like to give a report?
We have a very full agenda tonight with the public hearing and several items. I would be happy to answer any questions, but there is a full written report in your packet for you.
Any questions for Council? This is a good opportunity. I do have one quick question. Are we having a tree lighting ceremony?
We are having a tree lighting ceremony, and I do need to confirm the dates with Rex and Christie, but I believe it is tentatively scheduled for the Thursday before the parade. I believe that's December 2nd.
December 2nd, okay. Thank you. Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to comment on the written report for planning and zoning. It seems to me that we have quite a few applications active before planning and zoning. Is, and Patrick, I'd like to give you just an opportunity to say a little bit about, we've seen more applications now, what does it look like from your perspective?
We have been seeing more applications. In addition to the ones that are on your agenda, I have an agenda for the December Planning Commission meeting that will probably have three public hearings associated with it, and obviously, those items will be going on to Council in January of 2022. So, we are certainly seeing an increase in land use applications coming into the city.
And I would comment that, you know, scanning my memory banks, I don't think I've seen quite as active a planning and zoning agenda in quite a number of years.
Yeah, very exciting, yes. I would now like to open the public hearing for item 10A. That is for the rezoning of the Canyon City Commons at the Abbey to Plan Development District, PDD. Item A1, that's introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 29, Series of 2021, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Rezoning Certain Property Within the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Known as the Canyon City Commons at the Abbey." I'd like to turn this time over to Patrick Mulready, our city planner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, we are here to consider a request by the prospective buyer of the Canyon City Abbey property located at 2951 East US Highway 50 to rezone the property from a combination of R1 Low Density Residential and GC General Commercial to PDD Planned Development District under the name Canyon City Commons at the Abbey. As stated in the introduction, the subject property is located at 2951 East US Highway 50. Situated on the north side of Highway 50, it is surrounded by development areas within Canyon City to the west and within unincorporated Fremont County to the east and north. In total, this property is 187 acres in area. The property was annexed in 2004, and upon annexation was zoned to have R1 Low Density Residential to the north and GC General Commercial to the south, with an OPR designation upon a regional detention pond that was dedicated to the city. It should be noted that the boundary separating the R1 portion of the property from the GC portion of the property does not relate itself to any existing physical or natural feature of the site. It is an arbitrary separation, and from this, it can be deduced that the intention behind this zoning was to support a mixed-use development as far back as the time it was annexed. Since the closure of the Holy Cross Abbey and subsequent sale of the property, several uses were introduced to this property and have continued since the annexation. These include a winery, an event center, Colorado Department of Transportation training offices. There are also a number of buildings remaining from the property's use as a private parochial school, including most prominently, the monastery building. The applicant has proposed a rezoning of the property, which would extinguish the existing R1 and GC zoning to a customized form of zoning called a major planned development or planned development district as allowed for in Chapter 17.08 of the Unified Development Code. This type of zoning, under this type of zoning, the applicant creates a map called a development plan, which identifies a number of internal land use areas. The applicant has proposed to create a total of 25 planning areas on site, each with its own particular set of height, bulk, and use characteristics. Of these planning areas, 13 are devoted to residential use on a continuum of density, beginning at the low-density end of the spectrum. Planning areas 21 and 23 are called estate homes, which are large lot residential. Planning Area 23 proposes a maximum of 16 dwelling units on 17 acres for a density of 0.94 dwelling units per acre, while Planning Area 21 proposes 13 dwelling units on five acres for a density of 2.6 dwelling units per acre. Planning Areas 10, 16, and 18 are proposed as village homes. These are more moderately sized lots. Planning Areas 10 and 18 each propose a maximum of 25 dwelling units on 12 acres for a density of 2.08 dwelling units per acre, while Planning Area 16 proposes 21 dwelling units on eight acres for a density of 2.63 dwelling units per acre. Planning Areas 6, 8, and 12, I'm sorry, Planning Areas 15 and 22 are proposed as cottage homes with slightly smaller lot sizes than village homes. Planning Area 15 proposes a maximum of 35 dwelling units on five acres for a density of seven dwelling units per acre, and Planning Area 22 proposes 30 dwelling units on four acres for a density of 7.5 dwelling units per acre. Planning Areas 6, 8, and 12 propose a missing middle residential land use area. This is a term that was coined in the 2019 Upper Arkansas Area Council of Government's Housing Needs Assessment for Fremont County. These are intended as dwellings for predominantly young professionals. Planning Area 6 proposes a maximum of 35 dwelling units on five acres for a density of seven dwelling units per acre. Planning Area 8 proposes a maximum of 35 dwelling units on two acres for a density of 17.5 dwelling units per acre, and Planning Area 12 proposes 45 dwelling units on two acres for a density of 22.5 dwelling units per acre. Planning Area 17 proposes rowhouse-style townhomes with a maximum of 105 dwelling units on 12 acres for a density of 7.63 dwelling units per acre. Planning Area 9 proposes age-restricted senior housing. These would be apartment-style units with a maximum of 72 dwelling units on two acres for a density of 36 dwelling units per acre. And finally, Planning Areas 7 and 19 are proposed as higher-density apartment developments. Planning Area 19 proposes a maximum of 200 apartment units on four acres for a density of 50 dwelling units per acre, while Planning Area 7 proposes a maximum of 195 apartments on three acres for a maximum density of 65 dwelling units per acre. All told, the residential portion of the property comprises 93 acres of the Abbey property. This represents approximately 50% of the Abbey. The applicant has also proposed 12 planning areas for non-residential uses. Planning Area 1 is proposed as mixed-use retail on eight acres, and it is intended to serve as a location for an anchor tenant and a number of smaller retails as typical neighborhood to regional shopping center. Planning Areas 2 and 25 are designated for the existing Abbey Winery and a commercial agriculture area. Planning Area, Planning Area 2 is proposed at 12 acres, and Planning Area 25 is proposed at 18, for a combined total of 30 acres. It should be noted that both of these areas are impacted by floodplain along their southern boundaries, so these land use designations will not trigger the need for floodplain map amendments. Planning Areas 3 and 13 are designated as live-work office space, where an office or perhaps trade use occurs on the ground floor, and a residence for the business owner occurs above the ground floor. Planning Areas 4 and 20 are designated as historic, commercial, and office. The historic commercial area includes the monastery and chapel building, as well as the existing DOC offices, but adds for provisions for other kinds of office and hotel uses. Planning Area 20 is designated as office space only. Planning Area 5 encompasses the existing event center and makes allowances for an expansion of the center. Planning Area 14 is a 10-acre area set aside for a future rec center. And finally, Planning Areas 11 and 24 are designated as open space areas. Planning Area 24 represents the existing regional detention pond and an expansion area. Planning Area 11 includes the existing cemetery on site and establishes a new park adjacent to the senior housing area, as well as apartments, missing middle homes, and a single-family residential area. The other component associated with a planned development district is a set of written instructions which provide you- instructions which provide U standards as well as height and setback limitations for each of the planning areas established on the plan. It can also include certain design provisions such as staggered front yard setbacks in residential areas or requirements for landscape features above what the UDC might require. The regulations contained within the development guide are specifically tailored to the Canyon City Commons at the Abbey Plan Development. These regulations are not applicable anywhere else in the city and are what distinguish a planned development district from a standalone code-defined district such as R1 or GC General Commercial. When the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this rezoning request at their October regular meeting, they concurred with staff's recommendations that there were several corrections necessary within the development guide. The applicant also concurred with those corrections needing to be made with a corrected version of this development guide going before council as part of the public hearing this evening. This is why the applicant sought a postponement of their November 1st public hearing. The City's Comprehensive Plan Update Picture Canyon City 2040 was finalized earlier this year and formally adopted by Resolution of Council upon recommendation from the Planning Commission. This policy recommendation tool includes a land use plan. The Comprehensive Plan's land use recommendations for the Abbey property specify a mixture of uses for the property. These include residential in varying densities, commercial office and commercial retail, open space areas as well as recreation areas, and public, semi-public uses including governmental offices and facilities. The proposed planned development appears to be consistent with those recommendations. City's Unified Development Code, Section 1710040D specifies four criteria against which rezoning requests are to be evaluated. Those criteria are A, the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan; B, there have been significant changes in the area to warrant a zoning change; C, the rezoning is consistent with the purpose statement of the proposed zoning district; or D, there was an error in establishing the current zoning. Any one of these criteria being satisfied is enough to make a finding that the rezoning is warranted. Staff believes that all four of these criteria are satisfied. In addition to the comprehensive plan consistency, the purpose statement of the PDD Zone District as stated in Chapter 17.08 of the Unified Development Code is, quote, "In order to establish an alternate zoning procedure under which land can be developed or redeveloped with innovation, imagination, and creative architectural design which sufficiently justified under the provisions of this UDC. The planned development processes are intended to permit and encourage such flexibility," end quote. This proposal meets that purpose statement. Additionally, with respect to the criteria pertaining to changes in the area, it should be noted that this section of the city, on both sides of Highway 50, has seen a great deal of commercial growth, and the demand for that growth has not slowed. Finally, on the subject of an error in the existing zoning, as was pointed out earlier in this presentation, the existing combination of R1 and GC share a border which has no relation to any existing physical or natural feature on the site. The inference is that this property was always intended to be a mixed use, and the R1-GC combination was effectively a bookmark zoning put in place until a more detailed concept could be established for the property. And with that, the Planning Commission, as I indicated, did conduct a public hearing on this request on October 27th, 2021. The hearing included extensive testimony from the public following a staff presentation and the applicant's presentation. At the conclusion of the public hearing, Planning Commission accepted staff's recommendation that, subject to specific revisions to the development guide, City Council should approve the rezoning request for the planned development district known as the Canyon City Commons at the Abbey. That is before you this evening as Ordinance 29. That would conclude my presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. Also present to speak on behalf of this project is the project representative, Robert Brown, from the Fremont Economic Development Corporation.
Um, Patrick, one of my first questions is, I was kind of anticipating having a bigger map up here so we could see the, um, the planned development district. Oh, is there just the one?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we could pass it down because on our page, it was really hard to see it, and I don't know about on the internet, but some people have complained about not being able to see the fine details.
Sure.
I think that's a correction that we really need to make.
And unfortunately, when I upload my staff report into the system that generates the council's agenda packet, it automatically resizes everything to eight and a half by 11. There's, there's no way around that, really.
Is there access to those that are in the public that they can have a map down at the table that they can look at tonight?
I would have to go upstairs and print one, but yes.
Maybe it would be better to let them see it. Before I open to council member questions, I would like to invite Rob Brown to come up. And Rob, I'm gonna guess, there'll probably be a lot of questions or a request for you to answer or address the audience as well, and I'd like to invite you, if you wish, and if it's appropriate, can he come and sit up by the, um, or other department heads? Because I'm pretty sure you're gonna be on demand, and I'd like to have you handy. Thank you for being here tonight, Rob Brown. I know this has been an endeavor you've been working on for how many years?
Uh, thank you, and I've been working on it for more than three years.
More than three years, okay. So, what do you have for us?
Okay, great, thank you very much. Thank you, uh, members of council, thank you, Mayor, uh, thank you, city staff, most importantly, thank you to the citizens that have taken the time to join us here tonight and those that are watching us on TV. Appreciate, appreciate that immensely. Um, for those of you who don't know me, Rob Brown with FEDC, we're a private, not-for-profit economic development organization, over 40 years old in the community, and we play many different roles. In this particular situation, you've got an out-of-state seller and an out-of-state buyer, and that means in order to keep project momentum, you need feet on the street right here in the community, and so that is the role that I've been playing, and I'm very proud to play that role. Uh, I am a longtime resident here. I grew up here. I graduated from Canyon City High School, and I returned here in 2007. And when I returned, I quickly became involved in the community because it was clear that our community deserved people like myself that had benefited from growing up here to return to the community those things that they'd learned. So, that's basically the, uh, where I sit, so you know where, uh, where I stand from this point forward. Um, so anyways, a few things that are also worth noting, I sat on city council, had that privilege, so I understand what it looks like from the other side. I served on the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, as I mentioned. Uh, I'm with FEDC. I've served on the State Economic Development Commission, was the Senate appointee for two terms there, so I understand, uh, the project side of the objectives, and I'm very comfortable, uh, speaking to those specifically tonight. Uh, I also was one of the founders that created Canyon City, and where that becomes applicable is that we used the facility at the Abbey for three years to conduct a balloon festival and had tremendous success with that project, but that allowed me to understand very intimately that property and everything about that property. So, I can certainly speak to the very specifics of it. Uh, your stakeholders that you might be interested in is CB Canyon 11, and that's the company that currently owns the property and operates all of the facilities there at the property. And, uh, they've done yeoman's work there. They've done a good job. They got the property not through, uh, a choice of their own, and they stepped up to the task, and they've kept it operational, they've kept the buildings, uh, up to a minimum standard, and I think, uh, they've, they've done a good job, but it is not a cash-flow-generating enterprise. And as a result, uh, it's a project that needs to happen because if it doesn't happen, uh, the risk is that the property at some point in time will no longer be economically viable, and it'll slip into disrepair like other projects, um, in the area. You've got a group called the Sun and Shine Group, which is a real estate and legal firm out of Chicago. Uh, they do tremendous work all over the US and internationally. They got many, many projects, very successful projects, uh, and they're a very competent buyer. Many of the questions that were posed at the last public hearing, uh, revolved around whether or not our community has properly vetted, uh, the buyer, and I can, uh, tell you that this is a buyer that has stuck through thick and thin. They made it through the pandemic, uh, they, uh, all of the EPA-related issues. These guys have really rolled up their sleeves and be, become committed to this project, so I think they're a good partner. Uh, the City of Canyon City, uh, certainly one of the other principles in this, and I will say, Patrick, uh, and the, uh, planning, uh, side of this operation have been absolutely a joy to work with, and, uh, City Administrator Ryan Stevens has been very supportive of the project all along. The reason I mention that is that in the community, you frequently hear the other side that says, uh, that the city is not doing a great job of supporting projects or is not doing a good job of generating opportunities out there, and I want to say, uh, for the record, uh, that in this particular instance, uh, and in many others that I'm involved with, um, the city staff has really stepped up, uh, to the plate. Uh, and then ultimately, the citizens. Uh, one of the criticisms, uh, from the community at the last meeting was that there was a lack of visibility of this project, and I want to, uh, set the record straight on that particular point. Uh, we have had many public meetings, and we've had many opportunities for citizens to participate in this process, and as frequently the case, uh, until something is really important to the individual, they fail to provide that input. So, I want to assure council that we have had those meetings, and they have been productive, and many of you and many of the people, uh, in the audience and in the community have participated in those, and we had a couple of really unique opportunities to push that forward. So, one of them, uh, was that, uh, FEDC and the City of Canyon City collaborated on the Urban Land Institute Grant. Uh, that grant provided money to pay for a group of professionals, uh, from all over the state of Colorado and beyond, uh, to converge here in our community to look specifically at this project and make determinations on how they felt that it should be properly developed going forward. They generated a report, and they conducted many, many public meetings, uh, in order to derive that information. Uh, a second component, uh, that we leveraged was, um, the FEDC, the City of Canyon City, City of Florence, and Fremont County collaborated on the EPA Brownfield Grant Project. It was $600,000. Uh, City of Canyon City, to their credit, has been successful in winning an additional grant as a result of that initial project, and as part of that project, there were two assessments done on the Abbey property. Many of us think of the Abbey as, uh, agricultural property that just, you know, what possible issues could it have from an EPA perspective, and frankly, we found many. And the Phase 1 that was paid for by the Brownfield Grant ultimately resulted in the Phase 2 that was paid for, and there is a significant list of remediation that is required on the property in order to push it forward, and we were the benefactors, uh, of that as a community and had the benefit of engineers and people that really know their business speak to those particular issues. Um, an example that you may not be aware of, but there are underground fuel storage tanks on the property. Uh, the monks had, uh, an operation with school buses and agricultural equipment and things like that. They stored their fuel underground and then abandoned those tanks, uh, when they left the property. Those have to be remediated, so that's an example. Well, through the, uh, participation with the EPA, we were able to win an additional grant called the EPA Design Assistance Grant, and they liked our community, they saw what we were doing, they appreciated the momentum that we'd created, and they said, "We have additional funds that we would like to provide to you to pay for an additional study for this group to tell us what the property would be best used for." And a group out of Omaha called HDR, which is world-renowned, one of the most significant community planning and development, uh, organizations, engineering and architecture organizations in the country, uh, produced their report, and many of the drawings that you see in the package were part of that effort that they produced. So, in both cases, with the Urban Land Institute, uh, study and the EPA Design Assistance Study, they came up with suggestions that are very similar to what our ultimate plan is that's before you, uh, tonight. And then finally, uh, that put us in a position where we had the materials necessary to seek out a developer, somebody that had the funding, the ability, the desire to come to our community and build a legacy project that would be here for, in perpetuity, and that is exactly what we've done, and we've leveraged those assets, um, to get this project done. So, uh, the mission is to redevelop this site to benefit a current configuration and all these potential future, uh, you know, configurations for our, our generation that we see here tonight and those that, you know, have yet to come before us. Uh, we're fortunate in that the developer is a family-owned, it's a significant financial operation, but they're at a position in their life where they're building legacy projects. This isn't a fix-and-flip kind of a scenario. This is a scenario where they produce a project that they can put their name on, and they can live, uh, out the rest of their days knowing that they've made a real difference in rural Colorado and, and given us the opportunity for rural prosperity. Um, and then, most important to me individually, is that I've sat on many, many committees, many of them that you guys have all been on as well, that talk about the limitations that we have in our community due to the lack of housing. Housing is in a crisis proportion right now. There is a lack of housing here, and it is preventing us from doing the proper education for our kids, uh, for serving the, uh, first responders, uh, law enforcement, uh, nursing, all of these things, these people that we need to attract to our community, we're having difficulty accomplishing that goal because we don't have housing, we don't have a place for them to live. So, this is a project that we can lever that, and you heard, uh, Patrick refer earlier to the missing middle, and I think that's a component of this project that is going to really, um, increase our opportunities to, to bring those people in. The other side of the equation is, is when I lost my mother, uh, in 2017, uh, we were looking at facilities at that particular moment in time for assisted living, skilled nursing, uh, and most importantly, in this market, memory care, and those things are also missing in our community. We have examples of it, but we don't have a, you know, a, uh, a leading example of that, and this is an opportunity for us in this project to put in that type of a project, and we've already got, uh, a, uh, organization, a national organization that has made a commitment to that property, to build that property out. Um, and then, finally, as far as the mission is concerned, it's, it's about impacting the neighbors, and I had the opportunity, because of the continuance, thank you very much, by the way, was able to meet with many of the people that participated in the process, and the biggest concern were two things. What is the impact going to be on the, on the surrounding community, and had it been properly thought through, and what is the density gonna look like of this project? Because it's significantly more dense, uh, on this particular tract than in any other place in town. And I think that, that the mission of this project is to accomplish both of those things to the satisfaction of the community. So, and it's an engineering challenge from this point forward. Once we have the zoning in place, uh, we have the developer in place, we can move to the next two steps of the project, which is a development plan, um, excuse me, a, uh, help me out, Patrick, what's the right word I'm looking for?
And the next step, or?
The, uh, the subdivision plan and then the, uh...
Okay, so you will have subdivision plans for probably each of the interior planning areas unless you do a couple of them together. Those will be major subdivisions that will also have to go to Planning Commission and Council for approval, and then, subsequent to that, for any of the non-residential areas, there will be site plans that will be filed for them.
So, a lot of work has to be done by very smart people that know how to accomplish these goals, and the input that you receive tonight and in the future can be incorporated in that plan to pull together a proper subdivision plan. It's just part of the process. There are some requirements, uh, some guardrails, some boundaries that we have to, um, uh, respect. One of them is the view corridor. When this property was annexed into the City of Canyon City, one of the requirements was that there needed to be a continuous view of the monastery from Highway 50. Uh, we don't think that's a limitation, we think that's a great opportunity. What a focal point that we want to exploit. And if you look at the plan, you'll see that the entire frontage of the property is going to be a commercial garden, and I had the opportunity at the last meeting to mention that when I was a child here in Canyon City, there used to be fields of peonies that you would drive by, and you'd see flowers growing in these commercial applications. We think that'd be a great way to use that frontage and create this very welcoming, very interesting, very creative way of handling that area that is a view plane and a flood plane, so we think we can accomplish both of those things. Uh, commercial ag is a significant opportunity in our community. It's been a component for many, many years, and I think this would be an opportunity to leverage it. We're also using a technique we call pocket neighborhoods. So, as this project develops, which is going to be over the next several decades, so we're not gonna flip a switch and have 852 new rooftops tomorrow, what we're going to do- rooftops tomorrow, what we're going to do is we're going to develop this project over time. And so the density that you're looking at is the maximum density. But in order to create a more welcoming, uh, feel, in order to accommodate the concerns of the population, we're going to put these pocket neighborhoods that'll each have a park, a dog park or, uh, playground equipment for each of these clusters of housing internally. And then we're going to maintain the arboretum that is, is currently in place, which is unique to, the, only to the Abbey and to the cemetery as well. And we'll have trail connections and all of the various different components that you would expect to see on a modern, well-designed, well-thought-through project. And that's, uh, a critical component here. Um, and then ultimately, we want to make sure that, that council knows tonight that we intend to perpetuate the existing operations. Everything that's going on at the Abbey are very important to our community. They provide jobs and they provide services that would otherwise be non-existent there. So the event center will remain an event center. In fact, it'll be expanded in the new model. The tenants that are currently in place, they'll be retained whenever possible and those buildings will be improved because small business, as we know, on November the 27th for Small Business Saturday is a critical factor in our local job situation. So those will be maintained as well. And not the least of which is the, um, you know, the various buildings that surround the, the, uh, the quad there. So those are going to be maintained. Uh, the winery will be maintained and there'll be a significant player in the new project. And then we are going to find a use, uh, with a local, uh, developer for the monastery. So we can take that structure and give it the glory and dedication that it, it deserves. So those are things that we intend to accomplish. Uh, we understand the factors like water rights, um, you know, long-term management of the site, keeping it green and keeping it, uh, nice. Um, we're going to talk, uh, in detail with our engineering team about the infrastructure. Uh, we're going to exploit the urban renewal, uh, opportunities there. And then just a reminder for council, it is an opportunity zone, an enterprise zone and a hub zone, which is going to attract the type of businesses and investors that we need in this community going forward. And I'll close on one point about the rec center. The rec center, uh, that area, we're going to maintain the zoning on that. We think that the rec center is still an interesting part, uh, of the project and of the community. And we were thoughtful enough when we developed that zoning that we allowed for either a publicly owned facility or a privately owned facility. And so we're going to work, uh, with the local community to look at some private options. And, and maybe we'll, we'll open up the Red Bull Mountain Dew Recreation Center or some other type of, uh, of a way that we could leverage, um, you know, an endowment from, uh, corporate sponsor in order to pull that off. So until we, uh, we have the opportunity to fully run that ball out, we want to keep that zoning the same and take full advantage of that. So that's my presentation for this evening.
Thank you so much, Rob. I really, really appreciate your comments. Um, before we open up to council member, um, questions, I do want to hear from our public. I want to call attention that we did receive two emails that all council members have now received a copy of. It's an email from Tim Payne and an email from Emily Tracy. They will be a part of the public record and, um, would invite the council members to read those as you can. I will now call up the public to speak in order that they were received. You will each, um, have three minutes to address city council. We encourage you to, if you can, have a variety of comments to give instead of just perhaps the same message over and over again, unless that is an overdriving, um, point that you want to give council, I suppose. Um, for the three minutes, there'll be a green light. And then as it's coming to a close, you'll have a yellow light and then red means it's time to wrap up your comments. We will now start with Patricia Stiller, please.
I have to read. I'd do better that way. So. Uh, my name's Patricia Stiller. I live at 1207 Harrison Avenue in Canyon City. I've been a resident of Fremont County for nearly 20 years. I purchased my older home in Canyon City about eight and a half years ago. I returned to Colorado to escape the urban sprawl congestion and rising costs of California. I was able to witness the downfalls of city growth for the sake of so-called progress. I saw what it did to California and what it has done here to Colorado Springs. We shouldn't start that same cycle here. We already have increasing traffic congestion on Highway 50, becoming almost unbearable in the summer months with tourists. And adding a couple thousand more residents will turn it into an even bigger nightmare. Housing costs are getting out of reach for renters while homeowners pay higher taxes and insurance. Although we do need affordable housing, the last thing this city needs are a couple thousand new residents to add to the congestion. Instead of using the Abbey land to grow Canyon City, it should be used to serve Canyon City and there must be a better way to do it. I'm asking you to put the Abbey rezoning on hold for now to make time to reconsider the bigger picture and what the citizens of this city really need. The current plan also includes retail that seems to conflict with the city's hard work to revive Main Street by pulling shoppers to the other end of town. And already we have a strip mall on the east end of town that has never, to my knowledge, been at full occupancy. Walmart seems simply too strong of a pull for new small business in that area. The other reason to reconsider this whole plan, or at least its size, is that Holy Cross Abbey is a central part of this city's rich and long agricultural history. Turning the majority of that farmland into masses of housing is a figurative slap in the face to the history. That land could be much better served to the community by being converted into mostly outdoor recreation. I can envision city-owned sports fields, a skate park, picnic areas, trails, and maybe a working children's educational farm. And possibly even a seasonal RV park for tourists. That would generate income from the RV park and fees paid for group use of the fields, outdoor concerts, festivals. The possibilities are endless. This could be funded by a small sales tax so that everyone pays equally, including tourists. I understand that we're in a housing crisis right now. However, building for the purpose to entice more new residents only creates a vicious cycle of poorly planned growth and eventual sprawl. Canyon City will lose everything, sorry, that makes the unique town that it is. Please reconsider this rezoning, at least for a while. Thank you.
Please hold your applause. Out of respect for the business of the chambers, we ask that there's no applause during the public hearing. Thank you. Um, for IT, I don't know if Elijah, can we turn off the map on Facebook? Because those who are watching Facebook, which we have 20 viewers right now, they, they can't see the speakers. And I think that's important that they can see their faces. Thank you. Next, we have Tyson Cool, please.
Hi there. My name is Tyson Cool, uh, owner broker of Properties of Colorado, managing member of Bravo Property Management, uh, which is a manufactured housing development organization. Um, I do agree that Canyon City needs growth, needs houses, needs, um, businesses, needs a lot of things. Um, but it also needs acute planning and which I have seen has been done. Um, it's clear that there's been tons of money and, um, speculation done to this project. And, uh, I agree with most of it aside from high-density housing. Um, and, and really, we tried to do a density housing in Dawson Ranch, uh, which the lower phase of it was really a failed progress. And I think my problem is I don't in 20 years want to go to Abbey Street and have to tell somebody they need to bore, uh, 30 holes underneath their house to keep it up, like you do in Dawson. I, I don't, you know, I would like more drainage, a lot more reports, I guess, because, uh, makes my job harder to sell houses in Dawson because regulations were passed by, uh, more so ramrotted through, um, at the time. Um, I just feel, uh, a little more consideration in reports, testing, soil, our very expansive soil we have here is a huge deal. Drainage is huge to houses and their foundations. And, uh, I think we really need to take that into account. Um, other than that, I think it, it could be a really good thing if it wasn't so dense. Um, I think the, the traffic would, is really going to be a problem, um, that we have already not handled, um, with tax money. Um, other than that, I, I appreciate the planning and doing this. I appreciate the developer for bringing, trying to bring something big here. I just don't think we're ready for that much density. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Tyson Cool. Um, I do just want to note for the record that talking, you know, talking about drilling holes for Dawson Ranch and kind of the nightmares of Dawson Ranch, we agree, there's a lot of nightmares at Dawson Ranch when we, um, brought it, annexed it into Canyon City that we've had to deal with in the last six years to maybe do some corrections that have been incredibly expensive. So we, we really feel that pain and understand that necessity for careful planning, especially when it comes to stormwater drainage and runoff. And the map that is being studied in the back, let's do a reminder, that is not a finite detail of everything. As mentioned before, there will also be for each individual portion, a major subdivision plan and site plans done. Where are those finite demands for a complete plan that takes into consideration all these things? Which, by the way, city council has passed an ordinance that requires stormwater drainage, even for site plans, um, that that is, that is taken account of. Will that also take account of the traffic patterns and demand on that? Patrick, do you know?
So as we get into studying subdivisions, the applicant is going to be required to submit a master traffic impact, uh, a traffic study. And then as each filing comes forward, they're going to need to show that that filing and what they're doing and how they're laying out streets, uh, is consistent with and not creating a problem that was found, uh, under the, uh, the traffic study itself. So each traffic impact assessment for each filing has to relate back to the approved master transportation study. There will be a similar undertaking that happens with drainage infrastructure and grading.
Right. So sometimes we hate the word studies, study, study. But in this case, multiple studies for multiple reasons is extremely important and something that we value considerably. Um, let's go ahead and hear from John Hecker, please.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I would like to speak to you. My name is John Hecker. I live at 705 Glenmore Road. So the back of my property backs up to the Abbey. I've been in construction for 45 years. I've seen a lot of things happen. I did Berry Motor Companies out there, so I know what the drainage problem is. Where it went across the street, where it went across the highway, went across the whole thing. So we had to deal with city, county, state, county, city. It's all going to be done. What I'd like to know is, this developer who wants to come in here, which I've seen a lot of developers do this before, do they have 30, 40, 50 million dollars to put up front, not to do studies, but to do contracts that they can bring in the roads, bring in the water, bring in the sewers, everything else? I talked to the sewer department. They can't take care of any more sewer problems over in Florence. So that means, like any other part, we're going to get a new sewer system, new sewer district, or what's, you know, what's going to happen there? I did development up in Falcon. That developer put in a water treatment plant, a sewer plant, all the streets, everything else. They put a YMCA in. He, they, uh, took care of half of the prob, you know, cost of the Y of the, uh, rec center. The YMCA took the other half. That's the way they came in. Does this developer have that kind of money to come into this town and do all this? Because it's not, I don't know if you guys have ever done development or nothing. I mean, if you've done five, 10, 15 million dollars, you're talking 100 million dollar deal here. It's way above, uh, an easy thing here. I know we need to have, uh, storm sewer because I lived there. I know the water, where it goes to. I've seen that whole thing flooded out. I've seen it run across the roads. I know what kind of storm sewers it needs. So are we going to do a storm sewer tax, which is tax on all hard surface areas, blacktop, driveways, everything else? And will the whole city and county be involved in paying for that? Another, coming to the, you know, the far end thing is, I know that, that the Abbey has umpteen water shares. And I know that's what the development wants. That's what the city wants. You can have a million shares, but if you don't have the water, it doesn't make a bit of difference if you're going to be able to flush your stool or not. Uh, I see my red lights going on here, but, you know, I just wanted to bring it up. You guys need to really think about this here. Uh, I'm not against it. I'm just against being so, so many people coming in here saying, "The developer," I don't know if you've worked with big developers, they'll run it. And I hope that you guys can work for the city and not for the developer. Thank you.
We are here to work for our residents, number one. So I do want to make sure that's clear. Um, Patrick, can you please give an, uh, explanation of that process? So when a big development comes in and they have to put in the infrastructure, the streets, the curbs, the gutters, the stormwater, hookups into the water taps? How does that look for developer and the money that's required to do that on their part?
And so, and Ryan can expand on this as well, but the way we have organized our land use review processes and our development processes in the city, our hope is that what we want the developer to do to, is to pay their own way when it comes to the infrastructure that needs to be installed, when it comes to, uh, stormwater and how they're going to handle stormwater runoff, when it comes to grading and how they're going to grading, grade a property so that it conforms to the anticipated infrastructure needs that are necessary, when it comes to the installation of streets and curbs and gutters and sidewalks, the developer ultimately needs to pay for all of this. And that goes to things maybe outside of the development, like improving an existing intersection based on what a traffic study says the traffic generated by this filing is going to cause. Maybe that will include, uh, perhaps a signal might be required at a particular intersection because the volumes of traffic have now gone up. Uh, the, these are, these are things that the developer will need to address. They will need to provide us with the details of what kind of impact their development is going to create and how they're going to address that as part of the development. Uh, when we get into it, we then create what we call development improvement agreements, subdivision improvement agreements. And this is where line by line, we specify those items that a developer is going to have to build to support the subdivision. And then we obtain the security to ensure that if the, in the event of a developer default, the city will still have the resources to go in and finish the job.
So they put money up front to ensure that it does get completed?
Generally speaking, that is the way it works. Either cash or some sort of a, a letter of credit.
Um, Ryan Stevens, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I think, uh, Patrick covered that well. Uh, you know, the big, the big part is that development improvement agreement, making sure that, um, you know, everything is laid out and understood, uh, you know, at the time of subdivision.
Um, I would like to answer a couple of other questions too that were brought up. And that was the capacity of our water department and the sewer district to be able to take this on. I would like to call to attention in the packet that our water department did have an opportunity to address any concerns and they had no comments or concerns at this time. For the sewer district, they said presently that, um, Fremont Sewer District has treatment plant capacity to serve the densities and uses proposed by this application. Extension of the district's existing collection system to the development site will be required. And as far as an additional tax for stormwater or sewer, um, they, whatever, um, impervious services that they create, they will, they will pay the city the current tax rate for stormwater. But they also would have an opportunity to create a special district in these neighborhoods that could pay back, you know, pay for that infrastructure openly, ultimately. So it's the, the people who buy the property that will eventually pay for that infrastructure that happens. Or anything else special that needs to happen in that, that special district, they pay for it, not Canyon City as a whole.
And ju- just a clarification, that's an impervious surface fee.
Impervious surface fee. Thank you very much. So hopefully that answers some of those questions. And bef- I wanted to address that before we get too far and we forget to, um, to do that for you. Now I'll have Beth Katschmar, please.
Good evening, Beth Katschmar, 509 Main Street. Actually, I, I don't know that I have anything unique to add because I disagree with what has been previously been said, that we just have to be really careful as we look to develop our area, that we don't make the mistakes that, that other places have made. When I, when we moved to, to Denver, when I was eleven years old in nineteen seventy, that's pretty much Denver ended at Cherry Creek Reservoir, where Hampden turned into Havana. And then, and we bought our first place out in Douglas County in nineteen eighty-four, Smokey Hill Road was a dirt road, there was one stoplight in all of Douglas County. And when you look at it now, it is unbelievably crowded out there, and they've managed to take every space that's out there and, and fill it up. And so I just, I think that we all really value our rural areas and why we moved down here for our open spaces. So I mean, I think that the Abbey will be developed, but I just think we need to be really careful about how developed we make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Joanne Boffman. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong. You can correct me.
It's Boffman, Joanne Boffman.
Thank you for that.
I live at seven hundred Glenmore Road, and I really don't have a whole lot to say, but I am not happy. I look out at night and I see stars and fields and it's really nice, and now I'm going to be looking at buildings and houses and the deer trek that has been going there since I moved there over twenty years ago will not exist. And them deer are really cool to watch. So, you know, I love my rural area, and I don't think we need it like we want, this in our back or front yard. So I really think it should be considered, but I, I do want to say this, because I know I'm limited on time. Last week I was told that it was going to pass whether we liked it or not, and that appalled me. And that's why I'm here tonight. And if that's the case, so be it, but I'm sure it will be not exactly what the plan has been laid out. So that's about all I have to say. I agree with the folks that are talking, and I just wish you wouldn't do that.
Thank you for your comments, Joanne. Our last one for tonight is Beth Siegfried.
Madam Mayor, would you mind just taking a brief one, while they're trying to fix my headphones? I've kind of got all the static going on.
Okay.
I want to make sure I can hear all of you guys, so if you don't mind just giving me one quick minute, I'd appreciate it.
So we have some technical difficulties, if you don't mind maybe waiting just a minute, we'll get that taken care of. And we can have a quick restroom break, if needed.
I could not come up with that term to save my life, so.
We just call them by their abbreviations, DIA and SIA.
Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me? Testing, testing, testing.
Mandy, give me a thumbs up if this is all right.
Thank you for the chair. That was good.
But I never exceed the posted speed limit.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order, please.
You're missing one councilwoman.
Okay, oh, we need to wait for Dolly, sorry. We did get a few more requests to speak to council, and we will entertain those if anybody else would like to fill out a form. If you have any comments, additional comments you'd like to make, you're welcome to do so at this time, to fill out your form. All right, Beth, let's go ahead and invite you back up again, thank you.
Hi, my name is Beth Siegfried. I live at seven 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 Glenmore Road in Canyon City. I, one thing I would definitely miss would be the cows. And even my daughter, who's seven, loves watching the hay being harvested. She works my, our honeybee hives with me, and the honey that we produce from that immediate thirty-one acres behind our property that belongs to the Abbey produces an incredible tasting honey from alfalfa and clover back there all day long. My bees definitely will have other sources of forage to find, but one thing I kind of wondered about, my daughter, since she was pretty much able to talk, has called the Abbey the castle. The Abbey is a beautiful piece of property and very precious, I believe, to all the members, residents of Canyon City. My daughters asked me over the years when her princess ship will be accorded to her and she can move in and take up residence. What about our views? The beauties from Highway fifty are beautiful and they're important, but what about the views to the neighbors that surround the Abbey property such as myself? The beautiful balloon drop, when we had the balloon festival here, was amazing, and my daughter was wowed at the age of two, watching the balloons basically drop in our backyard. And that would be a crying shame to miss that. I would kind of like to know why the public, the citizens of Canyon City weren't better notified of this development regardless of whether the rec district passed or failed. A couple of dinky eleven by twelve inch signs posted in an area of Highway fifty as you go by that you would actually have to be looking for in order to find, seems a little bit nutty to me. Why not use this land? I realize development's probably going to happen whether we want it or not, but why not come up with more appropriate ways that actually benefit the citizens of Canyon City instead of people I realize that need housing or are going to be moving here? Why not help with 4H? Our rodeo grounds are kind of pitiful. Why not come up with, like the first young lady that spoke tonight, a educational communal, you know, working farm that would educate our children? We have such an agricultural history here that should be respected. There are wild beehives on the northeast corner of that Abbey property where the cottage homes are going to be built. What is going to happen to those? Are other beekeepers and I going to be able to help maintain those hives? Keep them safe? Be notified if they're going to be removed? How about making an equine center to help train our kids in animal husbandry, horsemanship, being able to learn to ride for recreation and maybe even professional purposes later on in life?
Thank you, Beth, out of fairness for everybody, we need to uncut your time for now. If the council in the future want to ask you some additional questions, we will welcome you back to speak. Rob Brown, I do want to address something that was brought up, and that was the castle, the Abbey. I mean, that is definitely a prized gem we all treasure here in Canyon City. What is the state of the Abbey and the monastery currently? And from what I understand, ceilings are falling in and it's under pretty significant disrepair. It needs a new owner to take it and restore it, or else it's, we will lose it as is.
No, that, that's accurate. It's under direct attack by nature, and if we don't do something about it, it's going to return to the earth. It's, there is no heat in there right now. The only part of it that, that has heater air conditioning is, are those few offices up, up front. It does have roof issues, it's got structural issues. It, it's going to be a, a significant undertaking to renovate. It's got asbestos in the basement and the boiler and, you know, it, it's going to be a huge project, but the, the structure is, is sacred. It's something that's, you know, all of us have, have, have seen and known and, and want to remain there. So the intent is to renovate that structure and give it a new use that is, you know, something we can all be proud of. So no, no doubt about that, under any set of circumstances, is, is anything going to happen to that monastery?
Thank you. All right, next in line was somebody that's actually online, we have an attendee as a panel, if we can move them as a panelist to address City Council. Looks like it's Eddie Newey. Eddie, if you would like to make sure you're off of mute and you have three minutes to address City Council, if you're still.
Of course, can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for the misleading profile picture. So I've been listening to this presentation all evening. My respect for this plan is that it indicates plans for longevity, which is something that this community, I think, needs. We need to be able to grow into ourselves. My concern is how activation of the site will be equitable. How will people who need housing the most be provided for as the site progresses?
Would you like that addressed right now? Rob, do you have an answer, and Patrick, as far as the equitability of housing, especially for those who need it the most?
Yeah, I think that's an interesting question, and I'll do my best to address it. I think there are multiple different housing platforms at multiple different levels, so there will be opportunities for people of all different incomes to, to live there. I think there are current, there will be a focus on what I refer to as that missing middle, and that's that, that group of people that our community needs in order to maintain our existing capabilities in, in our schools and law enforcement and nursing and things like that. But it will attract people from outside the area that want to make rural Colorado their home as well. But I don't know that we have thought it through to the extent where we would create a specific hierarchy of bringing in people based on their income or, or whatever. I think what'll happen was most logically is that we'll get developers, individual housing developers that want to take on projects, and then we'll encourage them into individual zoning categories there. And that, that's how I would imagine. We will have, the senior housing will be one of the first ones to come online, and we're projecting that to be affordable senior housing in the true legal definition of the term, but we're really more focused on housing that people can afford as opposed to affordable housing, just from a legal point of view.
All right, thank you.
It's great feedback, we'll, we'll figure out a way to accommodate that.
Yeah, thank you for adding that to your list of considerations and priorities. Did you have anything else with your remaining time, Eddie?
I did not. Thank you very much for allowing me this time to address my community.
Thank you, thank you for joining us online. We now will turn some time over to Elaine.
Hi, my name's Elaine Shurkey. I live at seventeen oh six Penney Avenue, which is outside of the city, but I'm a renter at twenty-nine fifty-one, East Highway fifty at the Abbey, and I have been since two thousand three. I didn't hear about this program, as indicated before, until I saw Rob posting the sign on, on Frontage Road. I just wanted to put in a couple of comments in here. I hail from El Paso County. I grew up in Black Forest, Colorado, before it got fancy. I have, I grew up in a construction family. My dad has worked for many developers, and this sort of zoning request, a PDD, a planned development district, is the kind of thing that a developer asks for so that they can have all the power on their side of the line, because this is how it works. If you don't get some money up front, and a lot of it, by the way, you cannot hold a developer to do what they said they would do. Keep that in mind. Also, this particular developer, the Schonstein Group, approached Florence in approximately twenty sixteen concerning the water, water leases through the city of Florence, and they were denied. I'd request that you visit with former City manager Tom Piltingrude about this. He's still alive. Many of our old timers who know better around here are passed on. It's time that we buckle up and figure out, we got to talk to the guys that are still around, and the ladies. When the monastery was built in nineteen twenty, the high water table on the Abbey forced them to have to deal with the water when they put the basement in the Abbey, because there was such a high water table, it cost them twice as much to build the monastery building. This information is in a book that's in the, the History of the Benedictines in the United States. My mom hails from Saint Joe's, Saint Cloud, Minnesota, which is close to Collegeville, Minnesota. That Benedictine Abbey, Saint John's University loaned money to this Benedictine Abbey to complete the construction of the Abbey. If you need the citation, I'm happy to find it for you. I request that you envision Canyon City the way you'd like your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren to enjoy this place. A high density, a high density housing development is probably not what you envision. If you don't know what one looks like, I suggest that you go up Woodman Road in Colorado Springs to Black Forest Road and drive down Valmer Road and look what it looks like now, because what this is envisioning is not anything what you see now. One of the things Manny Cullen put well, and he's not here tonight, so I'll say it for him. Put the houses in the dry. Keep the open arable land open. This is one of the last chunks of open arable farmable land. I do realize that it belongs to someone else. I'm deeply grateful to the current owner of the Abbey who has enabled me to have my small business on his property in a way that I can afford to keep my, my small yoga business going. Please aim Canyon City in the right direction. We are not the people who will live here in fifty years. We are not the people who will live here in fifty years. Our children and our grandchildren and great grandchildren will, and they're going to wonder why we didn't make the right decision right here. So please, I beg of you, find the right way through this, okay?
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you for everybody's work on this project. I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you. We will now hear from Mr. or Mrs. Hall. Thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't read your first name, but I would like to know what it is.
Yes, ma'am, Miss Mayor, council members. My name is George Hall. I own and operate Crown Point Land Services. I have been doing so for the last twenty-seven plus years, and I am currently at the abbey grounds running my operation. I beg of yous to think about whether you are living in a rural community or whether you want to live in a real urban community. I believe this is going to put a big urban type of feel to the area. I do want to make a couple of comments. It appears to me with the report that was read today, I question how much money has this developer actually put up, because it appeared to me in the presentation tonight that grants have paid for all of the research that has been done on this property at this point in time. It does not appear to me that the developer has put up anything to get to this point. Another point that I would like to make is I would like to note the order that they are going to plan on doing the development in. They have these different groups in different areas. I would like you to get a listing from them that they are going to develop Area A, Area C, whatever order that they want to do it in, but I think that should be shown to us ahead of time before this gets approved. Thank you for your time. Remember, we live in a rural community. We don't need the urban feel. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Rob Brown, can you address if, is there a priority of development and phases at all?
No, I think that, that part of the project is, is forthcoming. I mean, we've got an opportunity now to start on the subdivision work, and, and that is really going to drive the engineering and expense side of the project, which will help determine the phasing. But I think just generally speaking, it's going to, it's going to phase from the south to the north, and it's going to progress from where Highway fifty is, you know, to the, to the north over time. So that, that's just the general idea, but we hope to glean, you know, a great deal of information from the engineering team about how that's going to work and how it's going to, you know, how the budget is going to overlay with the engineering and so forth.
And would you also like to address the grant money that's been used for these studies? Because I know there's a story behind that grant money that was initiated, because this is an underutilized piece of property in, in Canyon City.
Yeah.
And part of that was geared by you, probably.
Those are legitimate questions, obviously, and, and I'll, I'll hope to address it, but the property in its current state is not something that can be perpetuated. So there has to be some opportunity for change there in order to make it economically viable going forward. And so from an economic development organization, from FEDC's point of view, it's our responsibility to the community to try to help make determinations as how that might work. And so the best way to do that is to seek out professionals that know what they're doing, and that requires significant amounts of, of investment in the, in the grants, to go out and get those grants. So yes, those grants have been absolutely beneficial in pulling this project together, but rest assured, and those that are closest to the project, will realize that the developer is very well invested in this project. Just the earnest money that is, that has been tied up for more than two years in the project is significant, and, and the legal expenses and the engineering expenses and the professional services expenses are immense, and those are all over and above the grant money. So rest assured, there is a significant investment of time, energy, and money in this project by all involved.
By all involved. And, and just for clarification, the desire for the grant money for like the, the Urban Land Institute grant and the UDA, the Design Assistance Grant, that was used so that as a city and as a FEDC, we have tools...
That's right.
...to seek quality, good investors that can come and take advantage of an opportunity zone and to do responsible development in our area to address some of our critical needs like housing.
That's absolutely correct, and, and it actually started with, you know, the COGS land, excuse me, housing study, you know, was kind of the first document that started this process. But you're absolutely correct, and, and without these tools, it's very difficult to gain the visibility necessary to find somebody of significance that does have the financial resources to pull a project like this together. And we've made great use of those tools on multiple different levels, not just for the abbey, but for the entire community. And as, as we discussed earlier, there, you have more applications in now than you, than you've had in, in, in recent years, and a lot of that is the result of these efforts, you know, to get these grants, to get this funding, to get these, these, we call them marketing assets, you know, into our possession so we can, we can use them.
Okay. And before we go to our last speaker, I want to address something that's been stated multiple times, and that was the lack of public notice and only having two signs put up at the abbey. Patrick, can you tell us what efforts have been made to reach out to the public about this hearing?
Certainly. So there are three forms of notice that any public hearing takes. Two that have to go before planning commission hearing, and two that have to go before a council hearing. For planning commission, the notice requirements are a sign posted on the property noticing the date. We have standardized signs. All of them are created as five by four, basically poster boards that get put up onto the property. And then there are mailed notices that are sent out to property owners within a three-hundred foot radius of the boundary of the property that's undergoing the land use application, therefore the public hearing. These are sent, as I said, to property owners. So easement holders won't get noticed about that. Tenants within buildings, if they're, if they're leasing space, won't get noticed about that, but the owner of the building would get noticed. So that, those are, those are the, the two components that go into play for a hearing coming up to planning commission. For hearings going before council, there is also a sign, but we now do publications rather than being in the local paper. We have a page on our website that people can go to to not only see the notice, but to look at a series of exhibit attachments that we put on, on that page as well.
And social media posts as well. I believe we've had those on our Facebook page.
I know our public information officer uses social media as a tool to spread word about that, but that is not a specific requirement for public notice.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, the, I'd just like to kind of continue that discussion a little bit, because the, what we're talking about is public notice and the ability to have public input into this project. But this project is, is part of a larger planning process that has gone on for a number of years. That was the revision of our master plan and the Unified Development Code. And could you talk about a little bit about the public process that was used there? Because those are, those are essentially the blueprints under which this development is moving forward.
Certainly. So you all saw the map, I presume, that showed what the, the land use recommendations from the comprehensive plan were for this particular property. When we initiated the process of updating our comprehensive plan, you'll all recall John Howseal gave a speech about how at its core, planning comes down to three essential components. Number one, identifying where you are. Number two, identifying where you want to be. And number three, determining the path you want to get from where you are to where you want to be. That comprehensive plan and those steps involved a series of analyses and inventories of what the community had now, our snapshot images, all of the studies that have been done over the last decade for the, the riverfront district and, and the Highway fifty corridor, the, the housing study that was done in twenty nineteen. All of those were assessments as to where we as a community are right now. To determine where we wanted to be in the future, that was where we had the public input portion of the process. And we had what we call meetings in a box where people could take a series of questions and, you know, they, they could have a little party where they could fill the questions out and then return them back to us. Those responses got tallied. We had a series of interviews with stakeholders that went on for a couple of days last September. We had a series of design charrettes that were held at the abbey itself where people could come and they could give preferences. They, they liked this particular concept for, for growth or development better than this one. Again, all of this was valuable public input that informed where we went back to planning commission and council and said, okay, this is what the public has told us is where they want to be as a community. And then in mapping out the strategy to get between the two of them, that's where things like the land use plan came from. That's where we said, okay, the abbey has a potential as an infill piece of property to be able to solve a lot of the issues that the public has, has identified need to be solved, such as housing, such as a diversification for the types of, of commercial office and commercial retail. And the abbey and, and the way this plan is laid out is recognizing that by pushing the density towards the center and actually pushing it so that the higher density residential areas are abutting existing commercial in the community. Multi-family residential and commercial are actually fairly good transitional uses from one another. So I would say that this plan is an outcome of the whole comprehensive plan update process that began last summer, summer of twenty twenty, that, that took us through a year of work as a community. This plan reflects that.
Thank you. And I think we also had a lot of online input and surveys that were done as well.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Consider, and I remember we pushed it for considerable public input for that.
We, we did have the, the, the project website where people could go and do the social map exercise. That was very popular.
Considerable public input for where we want to be in twenty years. Visionary plan.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments from council, particularly on this issue of public input sought? Okay. Then I want, do want to invite our final person to address city council, and that is August Huckabee, please.
My name's August Huckabee, as the mayor said. First off, I just wanted to say thanks to Rob for all the work that you've obviously put into this. I really appreciated getting to hear your, hear your backstory of just the, the work that's been put into this, and I think that kind of, that kind of vigor and vision is really exciting to see here in town. I do work at the abbey. I work for an organization called Worldview at the Abbey, or Worldview Bridge Year. We're located in Headley on the abbey property. We are a, essentially a private college freshman program. We draw students from all across the United States, and it's a Christian-based program, faith-based, faith-based program, and we teach core credit classes that students could get anywhere their freshman year, as well as doing a lot of hands-on development throughout the year, leadership development, and community service. We require our students, we, we average about twenty-five students per year. We've been there since twenty fourteen, and so we have drawn about one hundred and seventy-five students here to Canyon City from about thirty-five different states during that time. For nine months, our program goes from September to May, and during that time, we have donated to this community about nineteen thousand hours cumulatively of community service. So I just wanted to kind of state that for the record, just because I'm not sure if you even know we exist. We are a pretty small program.
I've seen your students at a lot of luncheons I go to at the abbey. They're wonderful people, wonderful kids and youth.
Yeah. Yeah, they're great. They are really, really great students. And I just wanted to come and speak briefly on a couple of things. I, I handle all of the marketing for the program at Worldview at the Abbey. I also teach macroeconomics, and I have my master's in business administration, so I love talking about strategy and economic development plans. First off, I just wanted to, I wanted to say a couple of things about this plan briefly, just to echo some things that were said earlier. First, that I find it really interesting that it's such a huge piece of development that's not focused on downtown. Having been here since twenty fourteen, I know that the revitalization of downtown has been a really, really big deal over that time period. Also wanted to echo the importance of just history. Walking along the abbey grounds and working there for six years now, I think the point that was brought up earlier about history was really, really important, and just that that land sitting undeveloped, and the word that was used earlier was that it was underutilized. And I think that underutilized is an interesting way of looking at it. Whenever, what I see is land that's utilized by farmers, land that's utilized by students, land that's utilized by community members who bring their dogs and probably unlawfully let them off of their leashes to run around, right? But it's something, it is a piece of property that is known by many in the community, not as a place of development, but as a place of rest, of refuge, of respite. And I think that considering that for the future is something to take into consideration, because that has been a part of the abbey's history for almost a hundred years now. I think it's worth considering keeping that as we look into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, August. Thank you, August, for your comments and for what you're doing for the young adults across America and bringing them here to Canyon City. He does, he, this is another question that's been brought up a couple of times, and that is, is this development taking away from the revitalization of downtown and also, I think, the Creekside Shopping Center has been mentioned? I would, from staff, what is your reaction to that? Has thought been given to that? And, and Patrick, what does our comprehensive plan address about downtown revitalization? And that's picture. I'd like that opportunity to hear from you all.
Well, sure. The, the comprehensive plan certainly addresses downtown revitalization as a priority. It is one of the list of items in our, in our list of priorities going forward for tasks and goals that need to be accomplished. But I don't think it's an either-or proposition. I don't know that you can't have downtown being revital and not get the abbey, or get the abbey and not get downtown being revitalized. I, I think you could have both. And I, I defer to Ryan, and I don't know if Rick is still here in the room, but I know that's a big focus for them. There's no reason that you can't have your cake and eat it too. You know, I...
Ooh, can I quote you on that? For all things?
Yeah, I think, you know, there, there's often the argument of, you know, it's an either-or proposition, and it, it can't be. You know, we, we hear the same thing with riverfront developments. You know, riverfront development may take away from downtown. But when, and I, I know I've, I've heard from it, heard from citizens, I know council's probably heard from citizens as well, but, you know, often we get criticized for putting too much effort in the revitalization of downtown and not enough effort of revitalizing or focusing on other parts of town. And, you know, this, this is, just for, for the record, this is not something that's being driven per se by the, the city. We have a, a private individual developer who is pursuing this tract, and, and that's what we're here reading, here for the hearing for.
Right. And they're, in a sense, they're kind of creating a community of its own where it's kind of a live, work, play campus.
That's right.
Where downtown, you can't have an assisted living center, and downtown can't provide our, the housing to the quantity that we actually need to address our crisis, with the exception of having more apartments upstairs, but that's just not sufficient.
Yeah. You know, looking again, you know, the, the ask to look to the future and looking at the big picture of, of the things and amenities that are needed in the community, we have many rural communities, including Fremont County and Canyon City, are much older than the state average of, of Colorado. We're about ten years older than the rest of the state. And where that becomes relevant is, is the need for senior care and having a continuum of care for seniors. And this is, this development, you know, as you look to the future, is, is looking to help address some of that. So again, looking to the future, there, there are a lot of elements that need to be taken care of, including housing, but from an economic development standpoint, creating jobs as well as creating more, you know, building around the healthcare industry that we already have, this is addressing a lot of those different things as you move forward with this type of project.
Thank you, Ryan. And I would also like to say, when we mention that comprehensive plan and what the, the people have spoken for extensive feedback, I want to also say loud and clear that one of those big messages is maintaining our small-town feel, and that is something that resonates... And that is something that resonates in that master plan as well. And that's something that I definitely want to be sure that we are cognizant of, because that's something I love as well. And the time has come for city council. I would appreciate an opportunity for you to give your comments or ask your questions, as you wish. And so it's the time for the city council to speak. Councilmember Gonzalez.
So I appreciate everybody coming to speak tonight. Let me assure you, I've lived in a very congested urban area. I grew up in California, where my parents had an acre of land surrounded by lemon orchards. I grew up with avocado trees in my backyard. And by the time we moved, those lemon trees were down, homes were being built. I've lived in Castle Rock at the boom of the development there, where the meadows was, the meadows, and they were being built up into homes. But I don't have any say on that. I don't have any say on what a developer comes in to do. This property has been for sale for 35 years, is that correct? 35 years, they have been looking to sell this land. And I guess what I'm feeling is, as a council member, who am I to take that away from what they want? I'm speaking, you're not, we're, I'm talking right now. Who am I as a council member to take away somebody who is coming in to develop within our community? Ashley, do you mind addressing the audience and just letting them know that when council's speaking, what the...
Sure, so...
I didn't mean that rudely, but...
I'll just address this really quickly, that what has been adopted by the city council, that number one, we will all consistently demonstrate principles of professionalism, respect decorum and civility in working for the greater good of Canyon City. Two, commit to working with city officials, staff, and the public in a conscientious and respectful manner. Three, refrain from abusive conduct or verbal attack and/or harassment directed at the city council, staff, or the public. Four, avoid objectively offensive comments. And five, listen courteously and attentively to all public discussions and treat all people the way you wish to be treated.
Thank you. So what I have to say is, the abbey grounds are looking to sell. I have a big open space behind my house right now, and I have no say what goes behind there. If somebody wants to come in and buy the property and build behind there, I have no say. I can move, I can do whatever I need to do, but... I'm a little bit flustered right now. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that, I hear what you're saying. I've lived in those situations. I've been just as frustrated. But this is the desire of this developer. This is the desire of the property owners of the abbey right now. And to take that away from them with a huge opportunity for our community, and we have to look at the positives too. We have to look at what's positive too. That's all I have to say right now.
Sure, you have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I might need to collect my thoughts a little bit more.
Absolutely. Councilmember Reed.
So there's so many different aspects I want to address. First of all, thank you all for taking the time. I know that it is overwhelming to get up here for you guys to talk to us. Rest assured, it can be overwhelming for us to get up here and talk to you too. There's several needs that this particular development is answering that we've been hearing as a council repeatedly in our community. And I don't really feel like that's something that we differ on. We know that a kindergarten teacher who's fresh out of college, who is wanting to teach at one of our elementary schools, is struggling to be able to find a place to live right now in Canyon City. Like, we've heard the housing crisis. Our police officers, Chief Shack has shared with us situations where his officers who want to be here are struggling staying here because obviously we can only, as a small town, pay so much, there's pieces there. But then they can't find a place to live even with what we are able to provide. We want good officers, we want good teachers. We want nurses that aren't just traveling nurses, but nurses that want to be here and make this community. There's just the same way that all of us who have grown up here want it to be also. That being said, you know, the housing study that we heard in 2019, those numbers were alarming. And so many times we've talked about the income levels of our current community and the struggle for our seniors to be able to afford property taxes, afford rent if they aren't homeowners. You know, there's all of these pieces that fit together to be able to make this community work for our neighbors and for you guys, as well as for, you know, young professionals coming in. And so trying to find a way to be able to bridge that gap really is probably the biggest challenge that all of us up here have. I agree, you know, I love the abbey property, it's beautiful. I love the deer, I love the view, I love the cows. Excluding the current developer at St. Scholastica, though, I would just like to, I guess, bring attention that, you know, there's a lot of open space there too, that we've been staring at for a really long time. And there's deer that graze there. But we've also seen vandalism, and we've seen weeds that are much taller than you, which isn't saying much, but taller than some of you, out in those places. And then as a community, you know, we're pulling our hair out, saying, oh my gosh, please, somebody save St. Scholastica. It's this huge piece of history in our community. And at the same time, we're looking here at the abbey, which is also a huge piece of history in our community, with the roof falling down and no heat. And I feel like we're at a spot where we're just trying to pick the best case of scenario. Neither is completely ideal. And so I would be devastated for the abbey property to at some point turn into what we have all seen St. Scholastica property turn into. And these are the choices that developers and landowners have to make every single solitary day. I know there's a lot of you that didn't speak about small businesses, but I know a lot of you in here are small business owners, because I've interacted with you out there. And we have to make decisions every day, and sometimes they're really, really hard. And we have a developer who is ready to, one, take a chance on us, which, I mean, come on, we all know how it's been to do business with Canyon City before, and the big steps that we're trying to take forward, but the struggles that we've had in the past. So they're taking a risk on us too. I cannot imagine, as a business owner, desperately trying to sell my business for 35 years and nobody wanting it. To me, that's just terrible. And so fundamentally, and this is just a personal view, I think that government shouldn't be in the way of private enterprise. This is somebody who owns this. Yes, it's hard, yes, we may want other things, but there's going to be other public hearings and opportunities. You know, I believe that there's going to be continued opportunities to have conversations. I don't want anyone to feel in here that they came in and that there is this decision that's made, because this is really a partnership, like, we're here to serve you. This isn't about us, this is about our community. And so I would genuinely hope that regardless of what happens here tonight, whether it's this project or it's another project, that you come back and interact and share, because that's what we need in order to be able to serve you, we need to know what that is. That really is the heart. I mean, that's my heart, I just, I want to be able to, I love our town, so. I just, again, for the sake of the PDD, which is why we're having the hearing tonight, this landowner has, my understanding, met the criteria. And so we have to decide individually, what is the role of government that we play in dictating the use of private property? And it's a bigger issue than just the abbey. So I would just encourage you to think, if this was your land or your house, and you were desperately trying to sell it for whatever the reason was, how would you feel if we were up here making that decision for you? Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I always hate following Mandy because she's so good. But my question for Patrick is, under the current zoning, could any of this project be done?
Not as it's constituted here. The current zoning is half of the property would be R1, and R1 requires a minimum 6,000 square foot size lot. You really couldn't do anything smaller than that. So the townhome concept, for instance, the apartment uses, for instance, those would all be prohibited under R1. The commercial, the general commercial uses that they've got, a lot of those would certainly be able to continue. But again, with commercial uses, you're having a minimum lot size that you have to maintain in order to be consistent with zoning. What they're putting in here is a more flexible zoning that gives you varying lot sizes, varying setbacks. So what they've tried to do is pay attention to what assets the abbey has now and where they want to begin to potentially address some community needs and therefore tweak the zoning so that they can put the sort of housing that they think will work here.
But potentially, isn't a PDD a little more restrictive as well?
Well, it is in that you can't spill over areas. A planning area that's designated as, for instance, village homes is going to have to maintain the criteria associated with village homes. You can't then go and apply it to the planning area right next to it that's estate homes. You've got that. And then you also have an intent statement that they put in at the beginning of the development guide. I'd like to read this for you. "This project will take advantage of the historic structures and will maintain the existing business operations, including the winery, the event center, and the monastery. Every effort will be made to respect the history and architecture of the abbey campus and the people that work there." In other words, as projects come forward, one of the things that any developer who's working to purchase land from the Sun 'n Shine folks, they're going to have to address how they meet that criteria right there. Their narrative is going to have to explain how they are respecting the abbey as an historic resource for the community and how what they're going to do is complement what's already there.
So I guess my question is, there is room for further conversation as each plan development comes along.
There will be many more bites at this apple.
When I ran for council in 2019, I heard a lot of things from people, not just housing, stormwater streets, homelessness. You know, these are all things that we've been trying to solve. I don't know if there's a solution for everything, but streets and stormwater, I can tell you, we inherited. This is something, in my opinion, when we talk about mediocrity in Canyon City, it just puzzles me. When we have a medical field where doctors are over the age of 60, the thought process of having to drive to Pueblo or Springs to go visit my primary care physician doesn't sit well. Our PD department, who can't ever seem to be fully staffed, nurses, teachers, I definitely would like to see more teachers that shape our minds of our students here in our town. And when they can't buy a house, I have staff that work for me, that make less, they make too much money to qualify for any assistance, and they make not enough to purchase a $400,000 home. So there definitely is a middle ground, in my opinion. And if John was building a fence at his house and I came over and said, I think the city should tell you what material you should use for your fence, I don't think he would be my friend for very long.
We actually do, for a little bit.
I'm done, thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
I just wanted to say one more thing, because it came up a couple of times tonight. And the woman who mentioned it the first time has left. But she made a reference to somebody saying that this was going to happen tonight, whether you liked it or not. And I can assure you that we as council are not allowed to discuss this information beforehand. There is a law that says that we can't talk about this information beforehand. So we don't know how each other feels about this. And to make a comment like that, if somebody on council made that comment tonight, they were speaking for themselves, not for a collective group. I just want to put that out there, because how we're speaking tonight is how we're feeling about the project itself. I just want to clarify that if that comment was made by a council member, it was made as a reference to themselves, because none of us have talked about this. That's all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Gonzalez. And I'd like to take it a step further, that we actually were not allowed to watch the planning commission meeting. We had to wait, this is a quasi-judicial matter, and we had to wait till tonight to act as impartial judges or decision-makers based on what came before us tonight. And that's another reason why the emails that were given, maybe one or two of us received an email, and we had to make sure that every single council member got the exact same information. So we are all making decisions on an evil playing ground of information that was brought to us. We will now hear from Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you so much, Patrick and Rob, really appreciate your time and the detailed presentations that you both gave this evening. And also really appreciate the public's time. Thank you guys for coming, thank you for sharing your concerns and raising them across a lot of different, really important topics and areas. I just, I really appreciate you investing your time and your energy in this, because I know that it's very important to you. It's a foundational piece of fabric in our community, whether your property abuts it or not. So I'm just, I'm grateful for you participating in this process and sharing your thoughts and concerns with us. I do have a lot of questions about the PDD itself, because my understanding of the process is that essentially, everything, all of the hard work that we all put into the Uniform Development Code and those zoning regulations do not apply, because this is a planned development district. Or do not apply as it relates to specific zoning.
So what's happening here is that the applicant, instead of using one of the zone districts that's defined by itself in the UDC, has gone for this customized form of zoning. And that customized form of zoning is going to give you all the other things that the zone districts will give you, height limitations, setback requirements, uses, conditional uses, special review uses. It will give you certain, you know, design standards that they have to meet. But when it comes generally to the other kinds of uses, whatever use you want to put in a commercial area, there are, within the rest of the code, certain provisions about design requirements that come in. Those are still applicable.
Understood. It's that first section that I'm really speaking to and that I'm really a little bit concerned about, because I think that there are a lot of differences between what we talked about and considered during the UDC process and got a lot of great input and kind of best practices from around Colorado and frankly, around the country, based on our consultant, and what we see here. And one of the things that I know I'm particularly concerned about are the lot sizes. I know in part of the narrative, I think on page six, it says, for example, that the estate homes will have a minimum of 6,000 square feet, or sorry, 20,000 square feet. And then when you go to page 14, it says that the minimum lot area is 6,000 square feet. So there's a big difference between a .45 acre lot and a .13 acre lot. And that's just one of them. If you look at the cottage homes, it's a .08 acre lot for a minimum lot standard. And those are just a lot, lot smaller than what we had considered in our UDC when we were looking at, I believe, any of the residential zoning areas. So that kind of density does make me really concerned, because I think that that's a lot denser than what we're looking at or considering or had thought about in the rest of Canyon City. So I'd love a little bit of, and I've got more questions, but first off, I'd love a little bit more clarity on, is it the 20,000 or is it the 6,000? And kind of some of those particulars as you were looking at the density standards. Thanks. And Patrick, I'd love to hear from you about how different it is from what we've approved in our UDC when it comes to the residential lot sizes and zoning. Thanks.
Was that question to me?
In terms of the clarification about the differences in different parts of the narrative and then the tables, yes.
Got you, thank you. Just a point of clarification for everyone is that the developer actually withheld their application until city council had adopted Title 17, to be imperfectly... to be in perfect alignment with what the city hoped to accomplish with that document and with the, you know, the future direction in terms of the comprehensive plan. So I just wanted that to be on the record. In terms of those lot sizes, that Estate Home is a 20,000 square foot lot size, as I recall. So they're essentially one acre lot sizes. So I mean, they're over 20,000 square feet. Am I correct?
No, according to this, the minimum lot size is 6,000.
Okay. I apologize. And I'm not looking at the document. So I'd have to reference the document. I apologize.
Sure. So I mean, I do have some concerns like that because you're right, in one portion, it does say 20,000, which is a little bit under half an acre, actually. But then, when you look at the actual residential district bulk dimensional standards, it's page 14. The lot sizes are a lot smaller than what they say in the narrative text.
And this would be the regular, page 14 would be the regulatory guide we use when they come in with a subdivision to make sure they're meeting minimum lot sizes and minimum lot frontages along a street. If your concern is that these are very small lot sizes, bear in mind, with the townhome, for instance, the idea is that they're creating rowhouse townhomes. So they will have product that's, you know, they are sharing party walls between them. So it conforms itself to a much smaller lot. 1,500 square feet for a townhome lot would not be unusual. I mean, you'd probably have a two or three story townhome, but the actual footprint on the ground wouldn't be that large. I will tell you that in terms of the variety of the types of residential zone districts that we have in Canyon City personally, we go from, at the low density end, the RL Rural Living Residential, which is, I believe, 15,000 square feet is a minimum lot size, to at the high end, the R3 High Density Residential. And it doesn't, I mean, it specifies, there's a relationship between the number of dwelling units and the minimum lot size, but it doesn't actually give you a specific lot size for them. So this, I think, is very specific in terms of what it's going, but it's also very specific in terms of how it is trying to drive development to be of a particular type, hence the customizations that they're making.
So I think my concern is just that these lot sizes are maybe a little too small and that it might create a little too dense of...
R1 is, right now, 6,000 square feet is the minimum lot size in R1. R2, I believe we've lowered that to 4,500 square feet. So we're not completely out of line with what they're showing here.
Because for example, the corner of Field in Central, that will have townhomes and apartments that would have similar lot sizes.
That is, that is an R3 zone that they are, they have on that property right now. And I believe they are planning to come in with a planned unit development overlay so that they can tweak certain setbacks and whatnot. But yes, that will be a fairly dense development as well.
I think there may be, frankly, I think there may be an error. And I apologize for not being able to specifically address it from my memory. But I believe the 6,000 may be residual from one of the versions of the plan where we were leveraging the existing code. And so I would be more than happy to revisit that and make sure that we don't have an inconsistency that, you know, entered the plan just from a literally, there's a voluminous amount of information that went into this plan and it is quite possible that we did make some kind of an error. The intent for the Estate Homes, from the narrative's point of view, is to have significant homes with significant views that, you know, are primarily on the north end of that lot. So, you know, it would be in excess of the 6,000 square feet. But allow us to revisit it. And I might suggest that council has the privilege to offer approval with conditions. And if that were one of the conditions, we would happily address that and make everybody comfortable that it was appropriate. So, and we'll sit down with the team and make sure we don't have something that's inconsistent there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Madam Mayor, I have a few more questions. Would it be okay if I continued?
Yeah, but Mayor Portman also has a number of questions. So just out of equability, we might kind of jump between each other so everyone has an opportunity.
So just to jump in on this conversation, essentially what we're saying is on page six, it talks about, it gives a narrative of what the lot sizes are. And it says for Estate Homes, 20,000 square feet. Table five shows that at 6. And so that's something that needs to be revised.
I think that's an error.
So that there's consistency. And hopefully, the 6 will become the 20, is what we would expect. I just wanted to say that, that actually, my, not so sure I have questions, is kind of some comments here. But I would like to point out that in this proposed development plan, that as it stands right now, not counting the winery area as part of the open space calculations, but there are two open space areas. There's the Recreation Center and then there's Commercial Agriculture. And so for the open space areas, that's about 11% of the project. The Recreation Center would be about 5% of the project in rough numbers. And the commercial agriculture, agricultural, is about 9%. And if you do the math on that, the open space requirements for the development is 26, over 26% is what will be in open space. And I would like to, I'd like to comment that I just recently returned from Boise, Idaho, where I have some in-laws that are moving there. We were able to go around with them and look at houses in Boise. They're purchasing up there, they're renting right now, but they're in the process of purchasing. And we looked at houses with them and the different housing arrangements that they have there. And basically, anything that's new is pretty much shoulder to shoulder. That you have, you can have large homes on small parcels. And so you have neighbors that are pretty close. That's the new stuff. The older stuff, you can have a house built in the 70s on an acre, but they're all going for huge dollars, kind of unbelievable dollars. But the point is, is that modern development cannot happen in a rural area where you have just rural lots being developed. Because if you do, the price on those lots, the price on those houses has to be so high that it rules out, you know, 95% of your population or better as far as potential purchasers. So I'd just like to make those comments and let's gladly yield back.
I would just like to follow up that a lot of our young workers, we're not talking about Section 8 housing or head housing, but we're talking about our waitresses, our deli workers, people that have been coming to us for years begging for housing opportunities so that they can continue to live in Canyon City. We want the younger population. And also, a lot of our older population, they don't want to have 2/3 of an acre. I have 2/3 of an acre in my neighborhood. Everyone else in our neighborhood has similar. I love it, but a lot of people do not want that responsibility nor the cost that comes with it. And that is kind of the status of most new neighborhoods throughout, not just Colorado, but our country as well. Amy, we're going to go back to you for your next question.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. And just to follow up on what you were mentioning with regard to open spaces and parks, I was really heartened to hear that the idea is that there will be some pocket parks within each of these individual areas. Because when you look at the big blown up plan in the back, it looks like almost all of the open space is that retention pond on the north. So it's great to hear that as the subdivisions are being further developed, that those will be incorporated in so that for those folks who do want those smaller lot sizes, they also have green open space to be in.
Before you move on, are you moving on from that subject?
I had a question about the open space.
Okay, go ahead.
I noticed that in some areas in the narrative, it says that it'll be 22 acres that are dedicated to open space. But then when we get to the pesky tables, it actually says 15. So I just also was hoping to get clarity on what will actually be dedicated.
I think the table represents the minimum that it would be and that the plan, as it's currently laid out, hopes to increase that number. And I think that's consistent across this particular plan. So we are limited handcuffed to a degree because we don't have the completion of the engineering. And all lot sizes would be a minimum lot size with the opportunity to make them larger. I would also comment that, you know, density does drive the cost down. And one of the ways that we make these lots and the subsequent homes on the lots affordable is by increasing that density, making the lot smaller to a degree. So the minimum versus what we hope to achieve if we can expand beyond that.
Yes, I think my concern, particularly just going back to the lot sizes, is that the minimums are not so small that they are driving a type of density in housing that I don't think we had contemplated under the Uniform Development Code. And certainly understand that there have to be a balance and certainly in things like townhomes and apartments, those people are looking for affordable housing without perhaps that care requirement of a yard. But I think that we're hoping in this project to see that kind of diversity and that, you know, a little bit more open space as you've contemplated in the narrative portion to be reflected in the tables. I was going to move on from open space, so I will yield back.
I would like to let council talk about the open space a little bit before we move on from that subject. I do have a question because you talked about that in the, at each cluster subdivision, there would be a park with playground equipment and such. But on the map, I actually only see one space that specifically says Neighborhood Park. Otherwise, I see comments with arrows for Multi-Use Recreational Trail, Neighborhood Green Space, Feature Flower Display Fields, Art Features.
Dog Park.
Yeah, I actually don't know if I saw a place that specifically said dog. Oh yeah, here it is, a dog park. So how many of those actually would have playground equipment for children and open space for dogs besides just the one dog park for them to be able to roam and enjoy?
I think it's more about the intent, meaning that the intent is for these pocket neighborhoods to be a pocket, a small neighborhood, and encourage interaction between the people that live there and have amenities like the parks. And again, I think once we get the opportunity to actually wring it out completely with the layouts and the engineering, what you're looking at is a, you know, a fairly high level plan with, you know, some intent, but we'll have to work that out. I think the objective is to have those in as many places as we can have them.
So let it be heard and duly noted on your notes that, according to the public comment that we heard, that there needs to be more attention to the open spaces, the ones that are existing, for more finite details of what that would entail. But, and possibly, and perhaps hopefully even more space itself dedicated to open and green space.
Understood and noted. And just to add to that, is that there's an extensive trail network that you might, it might not be obvious when you first glance at the plan, especially if you're looking at a very small version, but there's an extensive network of trails throughout the entire project with the intent that people can travel across the site on their bicycle or as a pedestrian anywhere they want to go. We would be considering those open spaces as well. And that is a big component here is that we want to connect this project to the rest of the community via these trail systems.
Well, and that is a good point because there are, besides just having just one entrance into the abbey and one entrance out, there are more entrances into the abbey. And so the existing neighborhoods can have access now, much more convenient access to these open spaces and parks as well. It's not just for the immediate neighborhood here.
Agreed.
Second question on that, though, is how much of the existing detention pond that meets our 100-year flood, well, our previous 100-year flood standards, is that included as open space? Because that's not necessarily usable to the public as is and actually is often filled with weeds and is obnoxious to the neighbors.
Yeah, there's an ongoing dialogue about that because our intent would be for it to be included in the open space and it would have the ability to be used by the community there. But we'll have to work through that. That plan that you're seeing there, that information came from the city engineer that was with us previously and that met a specific objective that he hoped to accomplish. But there is work to do on that section about how it's going to look and how it's going to work. And we have since talked to, for instance, people that are interested in flood management, people that are interested in the irrigation side and so forth. So there is a lot of work that needs to be done, you know, to achieve our overall objectives on that project. But that's an area that we think could be pretty darn interesting, but still yet to be determined.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that because it is interesting. I mean, as a traveling soccer mom, I've been to many a detention pond that's actually a soccer field when it's not serving as 100-year flood capacity. All right, if there aren't any other questions as far as open space, then we'll move on to your next.
Just with, following up on one of your points with regard to the access points, I just wanted to ensure no other individual property owners will be impacted by this current plan. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. I think when we did our initial sit down with the staff, one of the staff members said, "Oh, you've got a road going right through my parents' house." And that's the risky take with a graphic that isn't representing necessarily the specific engineered side of that. We will persevere on that particular point and avoid any, anything like that. So there's work to do there as well. But no, the intent is not to put roads through, you know, properties or do things like that. We want to accommodate existing access points or potential access points and expand on them.
Could I also just ask, do you have a specific list with regard to the historic buildings for which ones will be retained and which ones may or may not be?
Currently, all historic buildings. We intend to maintain all historic buildings. But there is a possibility that once the final assessments come through that they may not be financially viable. And one example would be Ullathorne Hall, which is, you know, extensively depreciated. So there may be a situation there where all our parts of it may not be able to be resolved. There are a couple of old houses on the property, you know, farmhouses, one in particular that has got some nefarious activity associated with it in a time gone by. We'll probably see some of those go away. But the barn, the monastery, Headley, Sister's House, you know, those are gems. So those will all be saved, if at all possible.
Could I also just ask, I know within the UDC, we put in a lot of work with regard to environmental screening and trees and kind of how do you buffer different types of density within our city? And I'm assuming, Patrick, that those are all related to individual zoning and that therefore, since they are not spelled out in here, we do not have any tools unless we require them to spell them out. Is that inaccurate?
I would characterize it like this. I don't know that residential density, unless you're talking very high residential density.
Which we have some of in here.
And there is some of this for sure. But remember, a lot of it is placed in more commercial areas as opposed to residential areas. As a use, residential typically doesn't need to be screened from other residential. I mean, unless the homeowners themselves decide they want to start putting up backyard fences and defining their private space. But typically, residential doesn't create conflicts with other residential uses. So there's an assumption of compatibility for the residential areas. For the higher density residencies, the apartments, the senior housing, again, you will be going in, you will be placing those closer to the commercial areas, kind of in the core. And there are landscape buffering requirements that come into play for both multifamily and for commercial uses that as part of a landscape plan, a site plan, they will have to address.
Okay, so they would have to follow what's in the current...
They would have to follow what's in the current, and that was what I was trying to get to earlier.
Yes, yes.
Just because a use might be enumerated in here doesn't mean it's exempted from having to follow what the UDC would say otherwise. The same thing with parking. They're going to have to meet what the city's parking requirements are for uses. They can't just go and create their own parking standards.
Understood. And then my very last question is just with regard to pages, let's see, when we're going from pages seven through, I think it's 12, which are the land use regulations, I was very surprised to see some things like mobile home parks being permitted in some areas that in the historic commercial district that you, you know, would be permitted to have multifamily dwellings, that you could have animal boarding in the multi... multifamily dwellings, that you could have animal boarding in the multi, in the MR district, that you could have an RV park in the historic commercial. Like, that there are a lot of things that are permitted, not meaning that the city would permit them, not the city, that the city would permit them, but that they would just be allowed. So, I was just, I guess, a little bit surprised by some of those choices and was hoping that you could speak to how those, how those were contemplated. Yeah, please.
Backyard chickens.
Oh, and that backyard chickens are not allowed anywhere.
Right, right. There was a team that worked on those standards that the developer and his consultants developed those standards. They're certainly open for discussion if, you know, if council has opinions on those. I don't think there would be any, any specific issue with making some changes necessarily, but that's, that's how they came to that conclusion. There's a specific request, as an example, for RV. One of the residents that spoke tonight asked about the same thing and that is a situation where we constantly get that request. So, I think that's where those ideas were developed, but certainly, like I said, they are open for discussion.
Yes, certainly agree that we need more RV parking spaces in town, but maybe not in the historic commercial district, unless I'm greatly misunderstanding what the intent of that is.
Let me be more specific on that particular point. Currently, the event center has always made hookups and spaces available to people that were visiting from out of town primarily for events and weddings and things like that. And the concern was from the current operators that they wanted to maintain that particular ability in that area. I don't think that anybody is contemplating a significant RV facility, but they do want the ability to, to offer those as a service potentially. So, that's where that specific dialogue led us on that particular point.
I think that there may, just in looking at the definitions in our UDC, an RV park is very, which is what this is, is very different than RV parking.
Yeah, that's accurate. I agree with you.
I think that the ones that I was most concerned about were the, the mobile homes being permitted in, in two of the areas. And as Dolly said, the backyard chickens not being allowed at all, although if your lot sizes are that small, perhaps that's why.
Yeah, there's some humor involved in the backyard chickens because this council spent so much time on that particular point not, not, not long ago. So, I defer to your point there on the backyard chickens. I think in terms of manufactured housing, there are some opportunities, you know, for that potentially, maybe trailer parks or, you know, maybe there's a definition piece that, that needs to be enhanced, so.
So, I had noticed, I was talking with, with Amy over here, sorry, I'm getting tired. Modular homes as apartment complexes. That was also permitted in there.
Yes, we, we've had the privilege of seeing some great examples of that. And there's such a fine line nowadays between an engineered component home or a manufactured home that are done off-site where they actually build the components and then bring them in en masse and they go up very quickly. So, we didn't want to specifically exclude these new building techniques. But on the same token, I appreciate the stigma attached, you know, to certain terminology. But the intent was, and the developer has significant business holdings in Germany specifically where this is quite common, that practice of what, what they refer to there as engineered component homes or component buildings. So, they're in effect made on, in a factory, in a precision factory, and then imported in pieces and then assembled. They go up very quickly.
Okay, and then my other question is on tiny homes. There's, there's no reference to tiny homes. Are those even permitted in?
We specifically chose to not include tiny homes just largely because of the other types of density that we thought would equally meet that need. And it just made more sense from our planning as a team that we did not want to include tiny homes in this project.
I have a question that might address some of the comments made by the public as far as, you know, why not focus more on downtown revitalization? We've really concentrated on that. And it's, and it's been one of our consternations, actually, as a city, is that downtown is not an opportunity zone. We do not know why it was not included as an opportunity zone. But the abbey property is one of our few areas in Canyon City that is an opportunity zone. I was wondering, you know, Ryan or Patrick, whoever might want to talk, what, for the benefit of the public, can you tell us what is an opportunity zone and what incentives or opportunities does that create for potential developers and might explain why they want to develop this particular piece?
Actually, I believe Rob is on a committee for the state, so he may be the best person to speak about that.
I can definitely speak to opportunity zones and I'm on the state steering committee for OEDIT for opportunity zones. It's a tax vehicle that protects someone that has capital gains, taxes due on capital gains, and it's a place that they can put the money and protect it from taxes. And it's on a sliding scale and actually this year is the last year that you can invest in an opportunity zone and get the full credit. So, next year it'll be a little less and a little less and a little less. But basically, it encourages investors that have money to put them into areas like, like rural communities that need the investment and then park it there for 10 years. And then, and any appreciation on those projects can then be also reinvested in the same zone and also defer any capital gains tax. So, that's what an opportunity zone is. It's a vehicle for an investor. The way they were determined was Governor Hickenlooper at the time had the unique privilege of picking the opportunity zone. So, what he did is they had to be, no more than 25% of all census tracts in the state of Colorado. And so, there was a fixed amount of tracts that would be included. In Fremont County, we have nine census tracts and we were awarded four census tracts in the opportunity zone and primarily focused on the income, the demographic of income in that particular census tract. So, if you met a certain standard like Dawson Ranch was excluded because of the income level of the residents versus the abbey, which is undeveloped property, very, very low income per, per square foot in that particular area. So, that's how it was selected. Downtown districts were specifically avoided in most cases for opportunity zone tracts because they were either historic or they had other designations that allowed investment in them that wasn't necessarily, you know, in the interests of, of the Tax Act of 2017. So, that, that's how it worked out. So, everybody put their suggestions in and then Governor, Governor Hickenlooper said, "Yes, yes, yes, no, yes, 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 no." We were lucky to get four and many communities got far less.
All right, so we have four. The abbey's one of them where somebody, and it, and these aren't just regular somebodies. These are usually investors that have considerable assets and revenues where they need tax, probably a tax shelter maybe in a way. I mean, you said it much more eloquently.
Yes, it is a tax shelter.
This, the abbey is an opportunity for that to happen. And so, that's another interest for this area that's attractive to large developers who have the assets and the ability to do this.
That's correct.
And addresses our, our underutilized areas and meets the needs, as you said, for our income base.
That's correct.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could I ask, Ryan, Patrick, and Catherine, maybe, one more process question? So, I just want to make sure that I understand. I know that as, Patrick, as you mentioned, we'll get many more bites at the apple and many more detailed bites of subdivision plans and P-DIPS. I don't remember what that stands for, but Plan Development Improvement Projects come before us for this. But I just want to make sure that I understand. So, when we are reviewing those, the maximum that we can hold this particular development to is what is approved in the PDD. So, if they bring to us a subdivision that, just going, taking the example of lot sizes, that has, you know, lot sizes where the homes are .08 acres to .13 acres, we can't at that point say, "We have a problem with this because we had, we've already approved it as part of their PDD." Am I accurate in that understanding?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I completely understand your question, but I'll, I'll try to answer it. So, the, the development guide plan is basically their zoning code, you know, with some exceptions. So, the UDC is going to fill in spaces that aren't addressed. You know, if they come in with a subdivision that doesn't match that, you can reject it, right? Is that, that's, but that's not your question. You're saying.
That's not my question.
If they come in and you've changed your minds.
No, no, no. My question is that we've heard a lot about what the intent is, but then what the actual kind of, what the tables say is a little less stringent than what they're hoping to get to. So, what I want to know is, it's not that we've changed our minds, it's that perhaps they aren't able to meet their intent in all areas and perhaps that's an area that's important to us, so.
So, the development guide needs to be concrete, you know, when it comes to like lot area or setbacks or whatever's in there, they need to be concrete things. That cannot be intent-driven. As to things like open space and how much acreage is going to be, so, we were not asked to review this, so I'm speaking a little bit from not having probably as much knowledge as you have from reading it. But for things like open space that might be maybe determined specifically later on, the city can ask for a development agreement. Patrick referenced it earlier. He called it development improvement agreement or development, subdivision improvement agreement. But there are things just called development agreements and they do not necessarily address specific improvements, like you're going to put curb here and it's going to cost this much and it's going to require security. There is a mass, kind of a master development agreement, and they go by other names, where you say you commit to X number of acres of open space or you commit to, you know, parks in this area or whatever it is, you know, it can go beyond open space. Of those things that are a little less concrete, you can actually ask for a development agreement at this stage to kind of set those parameters a little bit more forcefully if you so choose. But things like lot area, those can't be intent, those need to be set because this is essentially their zoning code. Does that, did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Potem Hamrick.
Thank you. And so, if I can add on to that, so essentially, if I understand it correctly, when we approve this development guide, we're approving table 5.0 on page 14 and those concrete numbers that are there.
Correct.
And so, the, if, if this were approved in its present form, estate homes could be put on a lot size of 6,000 square feet as opposed to the narrative 20,000 square feet. And that, that I think is, kind of explains the, the questions that Councilperson Schmisher has here and the, and so, the, that, that leaves us, to me, that, that says that, well, gee whiz, we need to see this table revised to match the narrative so that once it, because once it's approved, then it, then it is in concrete and that is the standard.
I absolutely agree with you, Mayor Potem, that if there's inconsistencies, they must be corrected before the zoning ordinance at least gets recorded at a very base level. Or you can, you know, ask for those to come back at second reading, that's your call and, and your authority. You can table first reading, whatever you'd like. But the base minimum is that they must be corrected before that ordinance is recorded and the property is actually resound.
Thank you for that clarification to each of you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Can we just back up to a comment that was made that legal didn't review this document?
No, we have not been asked to review this document.
It's marked that it was on public record.
We drafted the ordinance.
Oh, that's what, okay, that's what it was, okay.
So, I apologize, that's not really clear, but we had drafted the ordinance.
Okay.
But we were not asked to review, no.
Are there any more questions or comments from the council? Councilmember, well, Councilmember Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I've listened to a lot of people tonight and listened to both sides and we all have our views of what we want to see in Canyon City. A lot of us want to see it grow, a lot of us want to see it stay small. But I think, as, as Manny's put it, this is somebody's property who's invested in this property and if you're a neighbor there, you know, that's, that's something that when you bought that property, yeah, you probably never, ever thought it was going to be developed. But as a person who grew up in a county that's already been discussed, Douglas County, I watched that go from a very, very small community to an unbelievable community that is, some would say way too crowded, but when you look at it and all, they put in a lot of nice open space, a lot of parks. Is there a lot of congestion? The whole Denver area is congested. Carros Springs is getting congested. But we can't stop that. We could try to slow it down, but as we slow it down, then what does that do for economic, economic development? If it, if a community tries to stay as they are, they're going to grow stagnant and die. There constantly has to be growth within a community to survive. I think that, I think this could be a fantastic project. It keeps, it keeps the historic buildings here. A lot of people might not do that. Yes, there is hayfields. We heard somebody saying that there's bees. I'm a beekeeper as well. All that stuff can go on anyway. Hayfields are, they help, but the fruit trees do it. Everybody's flowers in their yards, come on. This and a hayfield. I had somebody put up a 40 by 60 barn on the backside of my hayfield. Not one thing I could do about it. Did I like it? Tis property. I think what these people are doing and adding the open space to it can be a fantastic thing for our community. Would I like to see us, our community stay small in that? Yeah, it'd be great, but it can't happen. And I moved down here 16 years ago and I'm sure the people before me thought, "Wow, here's somebody else moving in new." It's going to be a perpetual thing no matter where you live as people come. People are going to say, "We don't want more people." But you know what? Everybody's moving. You know, I had some new neighbors come in. I love my new neighbors, but I didn't sit there and say, "Wow, why'd you come here?" I welcome them, they're fantastic people. If we really look at it, a lot of us have moved from different places. And that's the one thing that we all got to remember, we're a community. And we're not a community with fences around us to keep people in or out. And that's what makes this, you know, our whole country great. We can move where we want to move. And right now, Colorado is a very hot spot. We live in an absolutely gorgeous area of Colorado. And I can't say unfortunately or fortunately, we're going to have growth. We can't stop it. What we can do is encourage good growth practices and make sure that our communities stay safe, we maintain open space. And I think that's the one thing that we really need to do as a council and as a community. Make sure that we still have the open space. Make sure that we have a very respectful neighborhoods and businesses. It's all going to grow.
Tim, I would just like to piggyback a little bit when you say, you know, can we stop it? And at a recent housing forum hosted by the Rural Philanthropy Days where they were addressing attainable housing, they had a panel of a number of communities and what they are doing to get attainable housing. What, some of their challenges is they are landlocked. I mean, we could choose to landlock the abbey, but these communities that are landlocked like Slida and Frisco that were on this panel, I mean, they're, they're resorting to using eminent domain and using taxpayer money to buy private homes so that they can have workforce housing. And, and part of that conversation was Canyon City is really lucky because we actually have space, we actually have land where we can build and have housing that is affordable for our everyday workers. And so, I don't, I don't believe we want to landlock, but we, like you said, but we also want to be incredibly respectful and careful that we do it responsibly and with the ability to still enjoy our open space for all to enjoy in this community. So, there's a, definitely is a very important balance that I think we all want to, to find and we've heard that time and time again today from our public as well. I believe Councilmember Schmisher, you had something else you wanted to? I believe Councilmember Schmisher, you had something else you wanted to, to address?
I just, I just wanted to clarify, my concern isn't only about inconsistencies between the intent and, that's stated on page 14. I am just concerned that the lot sizes, not only in the estate homes, but also in the other single-family homes are too small. Okay, 20,000 is, I think, reasonable, but once you get down to .08 for a, a single-family home, that's, that's, that's really, really small. So, not just, not just cleaning up the inconsistencies, but also taking another really hard look at those, and maybe taking another look at our R1, R2, R3, and ensuring that this development, you know, has that same kind of, uh, character and density that, that we had all hoped to see, as, as Mayor Smith so eloquently put earlier when we were doing the Picture 2040 process and the UDC process. Thank you.
If there's no further comments from the City Council, Ryan, you look like you wanna say something.
Yeah, I'm debating how to say it. But, and in response to Councilwoman Schmisher, you know, that we, we did contemplate R1, R2, R3 as specific zones. As Patrick stated when he introduced what PDD is, it is supposed to be used for creativity and for building a community around a specific parcel. And I, I think that's what the, the developer here is trying to do with, with that. So, I, I don't know, PDD is supposed to be a tool to use to diverge from what we have adopted under R1, R2, R3. And, and that, that is what I believe the intent was. I don't know, Patrick, if you wanna add anything to that?
I, I would concur, and I would say, I mean, I, I have seen communities in Colorado like Durango, where they will have in certain planned development areas, minimum lot sizes as small as 2,000 square feet. So, these, the numbers that are being proposed here don't worry me as much as the inconsistencies do. What we're talking about ultimately is that the varying types of residential that they're proposing to do are lifestyle choices. And therefore, as, as a lifestyle choice, a smaller lot size may be preferable to, you know, a larger lot size with maybe a larger footprint home.
I, I hear you. I also hear our public when it comes to the density and preserving kind of the, the feel and the character of Canyon City and of a rural community. I definitely agree that there do need to be choices so that people can, can have the kind of home that they want to have, whether it's an apartment, or a missing middle, or, you know, or a larger estate home. I am, I am just concerned that, that this is, yes, it's creative, but it may not be the type of creativity or the type of density that, that we would like to see. And again, I'm just speaking for myself, but, but it is something that I find to be concerning.
Yeah, and just, in response, and maybe Rob, I don't know if Rob would say anything to this or not, but I, I think Rob actually mentioned it earlier. Some of that density is, is in order to help drive down the price of those future homes in order to get to that point of affordability.
Councilmember Reed?
I guess I was just thinking of, kind of my final thought was, you know, someone mentioned earlier that we need to be picturing, you know, what we want Canyon City to be for our children and our grandchildren. And I'm a mom, and so, I obviously can't force my son to stay here the way I would like to. If we could vote that up here, I would. My heart-
I'd second that.
I know, seriously, right? Um, my heart is that there would be an opportunity for him to be able to choose Canyon City if he deems it worthy, to be able to pursue a career and a family and a life. And with the trends of current home sales in Colorado, he's 10 right now, if we continue on this trend, it's very likely that, short of me allowing him to live in my basement, which I don't want him that close, he may not have the ability, no matter what future financial, or future career path that he chooses, to be able to look at Canyon City as an option. And so, you know, I don't want, you know, our future generations to feel like their only option is, well, Mom and Dad get to stay here because they bought their home in these, you know, years. And so, we have to move to other, you know, other places out of just lack of affordability. And what I wanna mention again, too, is, you know, the difference in attainable housing. Like, we're not seeking out, you know, more, you know, Section 8, Section 8 or assisted housing, but this is truly for all of us normal people who are in here, who go to work every day, and, you know, provide for our families. And so, I really, looking around Canyon City, we're, we have less and less of that around us. And I've heard some comments before about, you know, well, let's move east, or do these things. But, I mean, respectfully, like, I don't really want to live out by the airport, like, that's not really desirable to me. But, I mean, those are some of the options that we're, you know, being faced with. And so, this again is an opportunity. And I, I understand, you know, the density situation, but as the daughter of a builder, and builders before him, you know, things like sewer lines and water and all those things, you can get so much more in a smaller space than having to run these long lines over and over. So, I think there's a place for it. And I'm super thankful for this opportunity for council to be able to review this plan tonight. It's exciting to see someone willing to take a chance of this size on Canyon City. It tells me that we're starting to do things right, to make it to where Canyon City is an economically viable choice for developers to spend their money, and so, anyway, I just thought I'd share that.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Thank you, and I'm suffering the same problem, Brandon, as, as you've experienced with, with Mandy. Coming after, it's awfully hard to sound nearly as intelligent. But, as, as a way to move forward, it seems to me that we need to look at Tables 3, Land Use Regulations, Tables 4, that's for residential, and Table 4, same for non-residential districts. Table 5, Residential District Bulk and Dimension Standards. And I think that we need to have, I think that we need to understand the difference between Table 3 and what our current zoning allows. And so, that would, that would essentially be an analysis by staff, to, to do, go through that so that we have it all out on the table, so that, as when the time comes to approve or disapprove this development plan, that, that we have the facts in front of us. And especially Table 5, because that is the, that is, that does have the numeric standards in there that will then be in effect once approved. And I think that we need to make sure that those are correct, match the, the narrative, or whatever is appropriate from the developer. I mean, I'm the, I'm not necessarily putting any restrictions on that. It, it should be what the developer thinks is appropriate. But, we need to understand and have that written down for us so that we know what we're voting for when, when, when we do take a vote, or voting against, as the case may be. But, so I would, I would recommend, it would seem to me that, that we're at a point where we need to probably table this until we have that analysis and a revised Table 5, so that, so that we can then be sure what we're voting on, be sure that we've heard our community, their concerns, be sure that we're honoring the developers' rights to be able to develop their property. And so, I, I would make that motion that we table this until our, our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Does that, yes?
So, I just need some clarification-
Please.
So, that we're all on the same page. So, you have a choice of tabling council action at first reading? And/or continuing the public hearing, if you so choose? That needs to be really clear as to whether you're gonna take additional public comment. You have, I'm not sure if you've actually closed the public hearing, there's-
We have not yet.
We have not.
We have not.
So, you'll need to make that choice in your motion.
Thank you.
And then, I, just so I understand, you wanna see a comparison of Table 3? Is that correct?
Table 5.
And Table 3 and 4 to our current zoning requirements. Is what's permitted, what's not permitted.
3, 4, and 5.
Well, there's, there's two, there's two different things going on in 3 and 4 and 5. Okay, 5 is numeric standards, 3 and 4 are zoning-
Right.
What is, what requires, what is permitted, what requires special review use, what requires conditional use or a temporary use.
So, you wanna see comparisons on 3 and 4, and you want 5 to be corrected as appropriate?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we got that straight.
Thank you, thank you for that, for that clarification, I appreciate that. Yes?
Sorry, Mayor Protem, just on number 5, could we have it corrected, but also have a comparison as well? Cuz I think that that would be very helpful.
Sure, that's what you like.
So, we, I just wanna make it also clear, we don't have to table the public hearing to future date. We could approve this with the conditions of confirming and correcting the narrative of lot sizes for consistency with particular attention to Tables 3 and 4 to current zoning requirements, and Table 5 numeric standards in comparison to current standards. So, we have a choice between the two.
Right, and you can close the public hearing, and it's done, and just council action will be tabled as well. Or, you could approve this with those conditions, you have that option as well.
Okay. Council, do you have a reference on, at least-
You do have a motion on the table.
Well, I guess we'll, is, that wasn't an official motion, that was just a suggestion.
Oh, I think he made the motion, yeah.
I did make a motion.
It was a motion.
I did make a motion, and so, so I would, I would, based on our discussion-
Yeah, I have not closed the public hearing yet.
Yeah, so, why don't you close the public hearing then, and then consider John's motion?
To public comment.
You can continue it once it's been closed, but you're closed for discussion tonight on the motion. So, you can always reopen it if you so choose in your motion tonight.
So, there has been a motion made.
So-
But, I am going to close the public hearing first, for now. There has been a motion made to table this. If you choose, we, you can second that, and we can vote on tabling it. I wanna reiterate, there is a second choice, if we vote one way or another, to, to go ahead and approve the first reading with the conditions I stated earlier. So, there has been a motion to table.
Second.
There has been a motion to table the public hearing to allow more time to have the consistencies made for the narratives on lot sizes.
And, Madam Mayor, before we vote, I'd, I'd just like to say that, that the reason I'm making this motion is so that council can consider the, the, the analysis of the tables and the 3 and 4, and revised Table 5, to then come to a conclusion about the development plan, rather than approving it now with, with changes that we hope to see. But, so, so that's why I, I make that particular motion.
You wanted to make a little bit more of a serious statement about the corrections, it sounds like.
So, so that we, we have a chance to review and, and discuss, and either approve or disapprove of what we see before us at that time.
So, we have a motion, we have a second, we are open for discussions from the council on this particular motion. Now, Councilmember Gonzalez, you did wish to make a comment before, do you still wish to say something?
No, in fact, I was headed down the same path that he was, so.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed?
So, just from how we've kind of, we've run into some of these types of situations before, and historically, we've talked about, you know, making the corrections, and then it comes before us in the second hearing.
The second reading.
The se, right, so, I guess I'm not understanding completely why it's necessary, because we're not, this isn't a final reading, why we couldn't, why we wouldn't consider allowing these to be taken care of. We've seen from prior things that were mentioned earlier that, you know, there was a quest for additional time from the developer to be able to make adjustments. And so, I feel like in good faith from that conversation, that it would be likely, and if it wasn't taken care of, it would be very easy for us to halt the process at the second reading. So, that's my opinion on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I appreciate that, but I, I also would like some time to process some, some situations and some comments that were made. But, my, I have a few questions on the legalities of this. If we, if we are to table this, can we welcome discussion from constituents?
You mean outside the hearing?
Yes.
No.
So, it's-
You were still in the quasi-judicial.
Okay, so constituents cannot approach us with questions or concerns?
Well, they can't approach you, they're not bound by their rules. But, you're not, you should not respond.
Okay, and then-
The proper response would be, can you please come to the city council meeting and ask that question in front of everybody? Everyone needs to hear your question, and everyone needs to hear the answer.
But, I tend to do that! Four years, come on! And then, my, my next question is, I lost it. Has to do with, um... Oh, when will it be brought back?
It would pause it quite a while, because we only have one more city council meeting for 2021. It would almost have to be tabled until 2022, because we would need two readings.
You'll be changing council members in 2022, and you won't have the same sitting council that sat for the public hearing.
Yeah, that's a tricky one.
So, what, what I would actually recommend is, you know, we, we had contemplated canceling the second council meeting in December. It'd be actually to hold that council meeting to hear this one item for second, for second reading.
Would we have a quorum? That would be December 20th.
No, I will not be there.
I'll be there, yeah.
Not sure. I would be here.
I can be here.
Mandy, would you be able to be here?
I will be out of the country.
Out of the country.
Unreachable by anything, other than a boat, but.
So, that's something to take in consideration on this vote. I would like to hear from you as a developer, what are your reactions between tabling versus making the changes before the second reading?
I, I, I appreciate exactly the, the concern and, and the density, and obviously, we've got a problem with at least one of the tables. I think the, the, the goal behind the PDD is to accomplish exactly what has been done, and it was done with a great deal of, of effort and interaction with, with staff. So, I, I think what you're going to discover when you get those analyses from the tables is that they are going to meet your standard. The only additional component that I would, I would enter here is that if it gets continued, you know, well into January, you've got a lot of contract dynamics in place with the seller and the buyer. And tho, those become problematic, or could become problematic if it gets, you know, artificially extended. So, I would wanna try to, you know, keep it moving as quickly as possible. That being said, I, I do think that we could rally the team and get you the information that you need between now and the next council meeting as well. So, you know, that is a commitment I would make on behalf of-
That's about three weeks, just to make some corrections for consistency on some tables, some charts. I, I have some concerns about the timing of this for the abbey and with the new council coming in and the holidays.
So, so given those concerns, can I, can I modify my motion?
You can.
Can I?
Well, then we'd have to vote on the amendment, I think it'd be easier just to vote on this.
You wanna vote on the, the outstanding motion and then start over?
And then start over.
Or, he can withdraw his motion.
Well, but, but I would rather, because I cannot vote against my own motion, I would have to withdraw it.
Okay.
So, I moved to, I moved to withdraw my motion.
Sounds-
And how does that, as far as the Roberts Rules of Orders, if it's been, a motion's been made and seconded, and then withdrawn?
So, I'm not a parliamentarian, I'm your lawyer, those are two different things. So, if he's withdrawn his motion, it's fine, you can just start over like I'm never gonna know.
We're good?
I have a point of discussion on one more.
Okay, one more point of discussion. By the way, that motion has been withdrawn, we're back to regular discussion.
Okay, I, I just want to bring up something that, that Amy had brought up, I'm sorry, I'm not using correct term, terminology. But, she mentioned about keeping the character of Canyon City. And- And, like I said before, I've lived in these areas where homes are on top of homes and on top of homes and, you know, parks are next to these homes and, yeah, it's, it's great, it's quaint, it's, it's congested, but, you know, there's something to be said about, about making sure that we are keeping the character of Canyon City in developing as we move forward. You know, there's a concern about, about the, the size of the lots, and I think that, you know, us being a rural community, we heard a lot of people speak tonight and we heard a lot of people frustrated tonight with, with their, the future of what might happen to what's happening next to their homes. And if we can, if we can make, if, if we're going to do this, let's make it feasible for them to live there too, cutting down on density, making sure that, that we're taking into consideration their neighborhoods too, because we're moving into their neighborhood. So let's listen to them, let's move forward doing the right thing for Canyon City. Okay, that, that's all I needed to say.
I would now like to entertain a motion to approve the first reading with the conditions of confirming the narrative of the lot sizes for consistency with particular attention to tables three and four and five.
And be provided an analysis of tables three and four.
Yes, and five.
And five. I said move.
So there has been a movement by Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick, is there a second?
I second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
The first reading has been approved unanimously, we do have three weeks for those corrections. We would like to see them well before the three weeks though.
Understood.
In our new packet so we can review them appropriately. Again, thank you to the public for your comments, we've definitely heard them, I've taken extensive notes and that, like we said, we have many bites at the apple and we will continue adhering to your concerns throughout this long process.
Thank you very much, I'll, I'll look forward to completing this to your satisfaction.
Thank you, thank you for your help on this, both to Rob Brown and, and also Patrick Mulready too, and Rick Harmon who's not here, and Ryan Stevens, thank you very much. We have now accomplished the first item on our agenda for tonight. We still get to talk about budgets too, among many other things. Let's take a five-minute break before we do that, though.
As you could see tonight, everybody is concerned with stormwater. Uh, so we were able to mitigate some of their concerns through design, through engineering, and they were, they are very happy with what has come about.
And, and I feel prudent to say that I think because of you coming on, starting new discussions is probably why we've finally been able to have an agreement to move forward on this project. So, thank you. I know it's, it's, um, has taken a lot of massaging to get through and it's exciting that we finally arrived.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, your kind words are very well received. Um, I just feel like, you know, everybody has to have a voice. Um, and then we, we try to adjust their concerns and then we come to a compromise.
Um, don't we still have one more property owner to get an agreement with?
We do. Mr. Game, he is further south. Um, we have talked to him in the last couple of weeks and we are clarifying some things with his memory memorandum of understanding as well as some, uh, uh, asks that he had of us, you know, in regards to trees and those kinds of things. But we're, we're, we're getting there and he's reviewing those documents right now.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council for Kim on this matter? If not, oh, go ahead, Ryan.
Cindy, do we have a resolution number for this one?
Twenty-eight.
Thank you. So, so the motion would be to approve Resolution twenty-eight.
I'd like to entertain a motion for Resolution twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one. Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve Resolution twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one on first reading.
I second. Is that a first reading or is that just a?
It's just one, sorry. Strike that.
One and done. Motion?
I second.
In the second, any discussion? Call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
That cough got me.
We're glad you're still here.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Kim. We are now on to item eleven A. This is a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance twenty-four, series of twenty-twenty-one. And this is concerning the impoundment of dogs within the city. Um, and probably some other vicious dog parts of that ordinance.
Uh, this, this is second reading. There were some requests, uh, to meet with the Humane Society. Uh, Chief Schick, um, did reach out to the Humane Society. Do you want to give a brief report, sir?
Sure. Uh, Madam Mayor, members of council, uh, did have an opportunity to sit down with Doug and, uh, his staff members, um, and go back through the dog ordinance. Um, mostly the concerns for, or the, the ask for considerations, uh, had to do, if, it revolved around their policy, um, comparing their policy to the ordinance in itself. Um, and I, I recorded their, their, their concerns and I forwarded them on to, uh, Mrs. Sellers and, uh, she gave it due consideration. And, um, there were, there were only, uh, four or five points that, uh, that we had, that we had to consider. Um, the first point was on page seven, item D, uh, where we were talking about, uh, the quarantine timeframe for dogs that, uh, were exposed to animals that were possibly rabid. And, um, and then the other concerns were, uh, on page fifteen, which had to do with, uh, donations and fees, um, which Ms. Sellers adequately, uh, conveyed, uh, both, both were really non-issues as the way the ordinance was written, uh, because the shelter, of course, um, can choose to waive their fees and, and make donation of services and, and so forth, if I'm correct right, Catherine.
Yes, that's, that's correct. So if they choose to waive their fees, it won't be unlawful for someone to pay them because they won't be owed. So, um, I think we resolved that issue. On the impoundment for the rabies or the quarantine for the rabies, um, I am not aware of a single municipality in the state of Colorado that has a thirty-day quarantine period. Um, we're not subject to CDPHE. You're exercising your police powers here and, and I just don't think that's an imposition we want to take on. So I rejected that change as well. And then I can go over the changes that came directly from council. Um, they're in, um, the highlighted version of the ordinance that you have. And you have a plain, clean version and then a highlighted version. So on page nine in the noisy dog section, um, subsection B, we didn't change this substantively. We kind of just re-sorted the language so it didn't read. It had that one phrase like at the very bottom under subsection two that was kind of hanging out by itself. And so we rephrased that and put that up in section B there. So, um, regarding the rebuttal, rebuttable presumption. Um, and then in, on page nineteen, so this is in the violation penalty section, so, um, six, zero, eight, two, ten, in subsection C. So this is the violation section for noisy dogs. And if you recall, it originally said like a minimum fine of forty-five dollars and then it had the maximum fine, um, under your general penalty provision. And so councilmember Schmisher had asked to have that graduated like the other ones. And so that's what we did. Um, if you, we just put the fines in there. Those are place marks. If you guys don't like those numbers, you can easily, you can change those. That's fine. Um, but we did the same graduation that we had used in the other, um, the same gaps, I guess I'd say, between the levels. So, um, those are the two big substantive changes. We made some other minor modifications from, um, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
All right. Any questions? Oh, it looks like we have councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one clarifying question. Um, and thanks so much for taking the time to, to meet again with our important partner over at the Humane Society.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Um, we're, uh, sorry, I was going to call you lawyer Sellers, but we're, we're.
We don't often get called that, but okay.
Were Ms. Sellers', um, responses to the outstanding concerns conveyed back to him?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I replied in email, uh, with, um, Ms. Sellers', uh, comments and reflections and I didn't hear anything back.
Perfect. Thank you so much for, for doing that and, um, for continuing to foster that partnership and relationship.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Reed?
I just wanted to say thanks for taking the time to go back and clarify that too, especially as one of the things that come up tonight later, um, is budget. And so again, understanding that partnership that we have with our one and only shelter in our community, um, I just appreciate the extra time, um, and attention to that to be able to have us review what those concerns were. Again, whether or not we took them was never the, I don't think the struggle, but just making sure that we understood really what was there because we're not experts. So thanks for taking the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Smith?
Um, Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-four, series of twenty-twenty-one on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second, um, by, I think, councilmember Dennehy barely beat out Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick. Most exciting part of our night tonight. Um, any discussion? Call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, lawyer Sellers. And, and Chief Schick, thank you so much. Um, we're now moving on to item L. Oh, my gosh, this is going to be such a long night. Eleven B, second reading and adoption by title only, ordinance twenty-six, series of twenty-twenty-one. This is concerning the historic designation of two-five-eight Griffin Avenue.
Uh, this is a second reading. We've not received any additional public comments and staff would recommend approving on second reading.
I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-six, series of twenty-twenty-one on second reading.
Second. There's been a motion in the second. Any discussion? Call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Item eleven C, this is the annexation and zoning of the Javernac property at thirty-forty slash thirty-fifty East Main. Um, do we do each second reading separately? Okay. So the first second reading is ordinance twenty-seven of twenty-twenty-one in, um, the annexation of certain unincorporated lands known as the Javernac Annexation Number One.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve on second reading a bill for ordinance number twenty-seven, series of twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Now to the second part of this property. This is a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance twenty-eight, series of twenty-twenty-one. This is also concerning the zoning of certain property recent, recently annexed into Canyon City. The Javernac Annexation of Number One.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve on second reading ordinance number twenty-eight, series of twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, council. We are excusing Catherine Sellers with honor tonight. Safe travels home to Denver.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're now moving on to.
We, we appreciate your time. I knew if I got behind him, I was going to go.
Oh, you've been here for a really long haul.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Tammy, would you and your finance team like to go ahead and just come up? I think we're going to have a lot of discussion maybe if you want to take a seat. I have some questions. This is budget. This is one of the most important things we do for our residences, accounting for every single penny that is spent of that fifty million dollars. Tammy?
So, before you. So, before you this evening is Resolution number twenty-seven, series of twenty-twenty-one, which will be a resolution to, um, basically summarizes the expenditures and revenues for each of the fund, funds and adopts the budget for twenty-twenty-two. There have been changes made since we had the public hearing. General fund was actually decreased by five-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. That was primarily from removing the two additional school resource officers. We still have two that are in, that are in the budget, that are existing positions. It removed the Parks Ranger. It also reduced our potential grants by three-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. We also updated some of the costs in, in the Police Department. We did get, um, a better quote on the dash cams and related software. So those changes were made as well. In our Parks Improvement Fund, where, um, a change was made for forty thousand dollars, which was to include the tree row fencing. That was an item that was put out to bid this year, but we did not have enough funds in the budget to actually do the project. And so in our initial budget, it was not included. So we're asking that to, we're including that in the twenty-twenty-two budget. Um, the other funds, there were no, um, changes made.
Let's go ahead and start with some questions from council. Or do you have anything else you want to talk about through this budget?
No.
Um, let's talk, can we talk about ARPA funds for a little bit?
Correct.
So I know that we have money designated for broadband and infrastructure for North Reynolds. What about the balance that's left? Is there room for more discussion about those ARPA funds?
Yes, so, um, I believe we have some funds, uh, in there.
We have approximately, what, four hundred thousand in general fund that is not, um, ident, that is not identified for specific items. There was a million dollars budgeted for ARPA funds in general fund, which, uh, that was primarily for our cybersecurity and those type of items. The remaining of that is not designated for anything specific and that will be, that those, before those funds will be spent, it will come to council for approval. But we wanted to make sure we had a placeholder, a placeholder in the budget.
Right, yeah, and I.
And there, there should be some unbudgeted funds as well for the following year.
That is correct.
Right, okay. And I would definitely want to have some future conversations on those undesignated funds. Um, sure, councilmember Schmisher?
Um, given that we have some undesignated funds, are we planning to do something similar to the county where we are proactively asking for citizen and, um, community input on those? I know we've received one request already, but I just wasn't sure if that was, um, publicly known to all that, that they could write in and, and, uh, have suggestions.
We, we did, I can't remember if it was a vision or general government meeting, talking about the, the use of funds, uh, a few months ago. Um, you know, generally speaking, um, you know, the water, infrastructure, broadband, um, and housing were kind of those top three items. And I think through the county's, uh, public input process, they're going to see the exact same things. Um, now, I, I think there's opportunities if, uh, the coun, council wanted to say, we're going to designate these funds for housing or for, you know, something along those lines, um, putting something out for specific projects, um, that, that might be something to look at. Um, but ultimately it's, you know, it's council's decision. If you want to put out, you know, something public for the remaining funds, that's, you know, if that's your direction, we can do that.
I think it'd be interesting to see what the county's results are. Like I said, it could be pretty similar. But definitely, I think the public needs to know that there are some and they, they should be able to have a say whether, where we go with our decision-making. Because I think even with housing and incentives and other of our top issues, including homelessness and being able to, um, address those, this is an opportunity for some permanent benefits that last for legacy that we can use these for. Um, Travis, you have been here a very long time as one, only department head besides Tammy that's lasted into the budget hearing. I see that you have over two million dollars allocated in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two budget for water projects. Did you want to talk about some of the things that you've requested in your budget since you've been here for so long? I want to give you that opportunity. So, or are you more for the water rates? Yeah?
I was for the water, but I certainly can.
You don't have to if you don't want to, but I, I mean.
I'll make a general comment about the two million dollars in the water main projects. Um, there is slightly over one million dollars coming from the ARPA funds to, um, fund Reynolds' water line. And then the remaining million plus is their normal, um, water mains that they'll replace to go along with two A. And so those are the main, the main water main projects.
So for distribution, uh, some of our main projects, being the water main projects, one of them being the roads, uh, this project was designed to facilitate the installation of new stormwater infrastructure. So a lot of that goes with, uh, lowering some water main, moving some water main, uh, upsizing some water main to include, uh, jack and bore underneath a railroad crossing. I think that is around seven hundred thousand all-in for all, all those kind of parts of that. Reynolds being about a million dollars as already was discussed. There's a Grandview Avenue Bridge Water Main Upgrade Project. That one is being driven by the Fremont County's plans to replace the existing bridge that crosses Four Mile Creek. And then some various, like, uh, we're looking to get a mini excavator. So what, a lot of the work that we do, uh, can be in people's yards. So replacing like a meter pit. Right now with a backhoe, that can be really intrusive. With a mini excavator, we could be in and out a lot quicker and we can be, uh, a lot cleaner of a job. Uh, we're looking to replace a flatbed dump truck, uh, two thousand and six international, replace that old truck. Um, replacing a GPS rover unit, uh, to, to aid in kind of our GS, GIS mapping. For water treatment, uh, we'll be doing low-head, high-head MCC upgrade. Uh, so we've already purchased a lot of that equipment under this year's budget funds. And then, uh, next year will just be the installation. It's going to be those, those dollar amounts. Um, and then we're looking to, um, uh, kind of rehab our, our filters or our twelve fil, filters. Um, those were last done in nineteen ninety-four. They typically have a useful service life of twenty-five to thirty years. Um, of course, filters being our, our kind of last defense of removal of contaminants. We want to make sure that we're not going towards the end of that useful life. We want to make sure that they're going to be replaced, uh, uh, when they're still useful and not waiting to react to that. Uh, and so that will be towards the end of the year, uh, replacing all the media and the filters. That's, uh, yep, that's an overview of our capital projects.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Director Payne. Could I ask, um, it seems like a lot of your capital projects may be driven by either two A or I think you mentioned the county with, with regard to the Grandview.
Sure.
Um, bridge. Are there capital projects that you aren't able to get to that are necessary in the waterfront?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's probably water mains that, that, um, if we, we had all the choices in the world, we might replace, uh, before other ones. Now, in saying that, the two A-driven projects are important when you're putting down a new street. Of course, you want to replace a water main that's underneath that. Um, so it's, it's not saying that's, that's not anything we want to do, but there probably are more pressing water mains that we would choose to do. A great example of that would be, there's currently a, a section of sixteen-inch water main that's on the south side of Royal George Boulevard. That's currently, uh, valved off right now. A problem being of that is we had three, two, two if not three large water leaks on that. When that sixteen-inch, uh, blows up, it, it goes big and it creates quite a mess. And so rather than, um, taking the chance of that happening again, we valve those, that, that water main off. So we sure would like to replace that. So we'd have that kind of arterial main going through. That would be a good example of that. That isn't on our capital improvement plan right now because we just don't have the funds for it right now.
Thank you. More ARPA, ARPA discussion, possibly. Um, all right, thank you, Travis. Appreciate it. On, um, in our budget book, under CIP, Capital Improvement Projects, it shows four hundred thousand being designated for property acquisitions. And I was curious, besides, um, obtaining possibly the dry cleaner property, which is well below four hundred thousand, what, what other anticipations are you having? Or is that part of the cleanup of the property?
The four hundred thousand is something that we put in. Unless we have a, a specific project in, in mind, we put that in as a placeholder, um, you know.
For when opportunities arise that are needed. Um, which brings me to the police building renovation. That police building was donated to us a few years ago. We've been sinking tons of money into that every single year. I see there's another two hundred thousand dollars designated in twenty-twenty-two. Is that going to be the last of the improve, major improvements at that building?
We, we should be getting close. Uh, just as a reminder, in twenty-twenty, we had budgeted funds against it, but because of COVID, when we did budget cuts, that was one of the projects that got cut.
Okay. All right. That makes more sense. Cause I'm like, sheesh. Again, already. Um, another item of two hundred thousand dollars, though, is ditch crossings under street projects. And so usually we'll save up two hundred thousand in one year, two hundred thousand the next year, and then do a ditch crossing. But to my historical knowledge, in this past six years, I don't know if we've ever actually done a ditch crossing. Have we and will we actually do a ditch crossing project? And what is the
We anticipate that some of those funds may be used for some of the roads avenue project for some of the ditch crossing, uh, there. Um, there was another one that we were looking at. Um, but in recent history, no.
I really strongly, and I feel former councilmember Jim Meisner's presence with me in this statement. I want to see evidence of that actually happening in twenty-twenty-two versus sooner because it, it, that is a consternation to our, um, to, it's been a long night, to the water that comes through for ditch, for our ditch companies, that we need to be doing this consistently and not just saying it, but actually doing it. Um, I'm going to move down to Macon Plaza intersection improvements for one hundred thousand. What are intentions with that?
Uh, that was another one that, uh, we had in there. Um, and I don't know that, uh, with the transition in engineering, whether or not a hundred thousand would be enough to do, uh, the, the information of, or the, uh, a project over there. I'll, I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Is there a project in the road, just actually in the intersection in the road?
Yeah, that's the intersection side, yep.
So that's a big question mark, project. Um, I see two places for twenty-twenty-three, a US fifty corridor improvements. One under street projects and another one under Quality of Life Fund. Which particular US fifty corridor improvement projects? Is this dupl, duplitus? Or is that intentional? There's one, they're both for two million dollars for twenty-twenty-three. The US, one says US fifty corridor improvements, one just says US fifty corridor. I'm wondering, is this the, the safe pedestrian crossing between?
That's in the CIP?
First and fifteenth? Yeah, it's under CIP, which was actually supposed to be done in twenty-twenty-one. Is, are that, is that what we're referring to?
So there, there's two million dollars for, and that should be for twenty-twenty-two, uh, rolling over the twenty-twenty-one project.
There's nothing in twenty-twenty-two, except for seven, one-point-seven million dollars for US fifty slash one-fifteen pedestrian improvements.
One of the projects for twenty-twenty-one was, um, completed on, um, US fifty-one, um, highway?
Yeah, the sidewalk, a knife.
Right. So those proj, that project was completed. Um, we have the lighting, that's part of one of the projects.
That's on East Highway fifty. And that's also, that's also, um, in here under Quality of Life for one-point-five million for twenty-twenty-two.
So the, the two million that was in, um, the general fund was, it's at the other, um, project, Ryan, that doesn't have any, any grant funding. It's all city that may or may not happen in the future.
So the, the CIP has two million dollars a year for the East Access Control Plan. Um, it, actually, it's not the East Access Control Plan. It was the Highway Fifty Corridor Plan. Um, so this, for, for the CIP, those, those numbers show in there over the five-year period, but, um, it depends on whether or not there's funding. Uh, typically those get rolled back every, every year because we don't have.
We have none of that for twenty-twenty-two, just twenty-twenty-three and moving forward.
Right. So the, for twenty-twenty-two, the, the funds that should be in there would be for the, uh, street, uh, pedestrian crossing project.
In the quality of life only.
Is that on one-fifteen or on US fifty?
It's on US fifty.
Okay. Is that the one-point-seven million dollars?
Quality of life for, is it one-point-seven?
It's quality of life for one-point-seven. So that's what that is?
Yes.
Um, and then as for the US fifty east lighting, um, correction, it's actually seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. I know there's some grant money to go with that. But in the actual text, it just talks about designing it. Are we designing it in twenty-twenty-two? Or are we actually going to design and install?
It's design in first phase of construction and that's a, um, second phase is, uh, additional, uh, funding.
Okay. Are we, um, and I want to also talk about the authorized positions. Um, we cut back on, it sounds like SRO and co-responder.
The two SROs and the Park Ranger were both cut. The co-responder is, uh, The co-responder is funded through the grant program. And then there is an additional position for a training sergeant at the police department.
Why are we cutting the additional park ranger?
That was based off of funding from the Parks and Rec District, depending on a positive outcome from the vote.
Oh, because that was going to be with partnership with the Arkansas Riverwalk. Okay. I wanted to make sure we were meeting our needs for the mountain parks and such. And and interfacing with the homeless population. Okay, I think most of my questions have been answered. Is there any others? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My only concern is that we don't actually have the final budget. And we're being asked to vote on it and approve it. And I understand that we'll get it after this meeting is over. But I I'm just concerned that I'm being asked to vote and approve something that I haven't actually received.
So the proposed budget that you received October first, the main line items per department, essentially, they stayed, they stayed the same. With the exception of the police department changing for staffing and their contracted, I think was under, it was either under contracted services or equipment. It may have been in two different line items for the body cams and the associated software. And then also the line item for the potential grants, that one was reduced. In city council's budget, there was an addition of like a thousand dollars added to dues and subscriptions because that was something that was missed in our draft budget. There was also an error made where a the request was put in by the department, but they put a quantity as zero. And so the figure did not go through. And that was sixty-eight hundred dollars. But our net effect was the five hundred and ninety-nine thousand in general fund. The other departments stayed as they were.
Thank you so much for explaining all of the changes. My concern is just being asked to vote on something that we haven't actually received. So I I really appreciate your time and like detail in going through what all of the changes were. But I, in the future, I would really hope that, you know, prior to this meeting where we're being asked to approve the budget, that we would get the final budget so that we can see it.
One of, and I understand where you're coming from. One of the issues is that as we're presenting it to you to be adopted, if there were changes that council asked for this evening, we would have, we would then go go in and redo an additional budget again. So that's that's one of the reasons why, once it's formally adopted and the ordinance has the second reading, then the document is produced in its final form.
Thank you, and allow me to ask a clarifying question since this is my first year on council. So this is the first reading of this. We will get the final budget and we will be able to review that before the second reading, which will happen in December. Am I understanding you well?
So you'll you'll get the, so the resolution is is just one reading. And then, but the appropriation of funds is is where you have the two readings.
That's where it's two readings, but you will not get the final budget document until after the second reading. The actual formal document.
I understand that the formal document would come after the second reading because there may be changes that happen during the readings. But if we're being asked to do a reading and we're being asked to approve something, I would really appreciate receiving that in advance so that we can review it and and make sure that we have complete understanding.
This, but just with a couple of tweaks, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, so I would like to see those tweaks is is my point. I'm not in any way suggesting that we hold anything up, but for for future iterations of this, I am a very visual person and I would like to be able to like actually look through it in advance and make sure that I understand what all the changes are.
Rather than republish the whole budget, is it possible to do a couple of errata pages? Something like that?
And when are you wanting those?
Twenty twenty-two, next next budget hearing.
So my suggestion was just, because I understand where Amy's coming from, maybe just like those tweaks because you you know what they are. Maybe even if it's just an email or something of like some quick bullet point highlights of, hey, these are the couple of things that weren't in there, just so that way if there's questions on it, you can ask. I think I understand where you're coming from. And you haven't done this part before, so I had like the same questions the first time, so I get it. I just, I think maybe just like a quick, like I said, like a little email with just a couple of those bullet points, like, hey, these are the five things that we tweaked since that, just so we have an idea.
And that was, it when we actually did the formal budget hearing in the end of October, wasn't, no, it was first meeting in November. It was the first meeting in November, the general government meeting, and that we switched it to a special meeting at that one. In our slideshow, we did have some of the items that we knew we were going to remove. But that hearing showed what was actually in in the budget document. So we did have some potential changes that were.
Third Wednesday in October, yeah.
So we did have some of those as well, but.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I would like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Dennehy.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a res- or motion to pass Resolution number twenty-seven, series of twenty twenty-one. Second.
There's been a motion and a second any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Tammy and your finance team. We are now on to D two, introduction and first reading by title, only of ordinance thirty, series of twenty twenty-one, entitled an ordinance appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies in amounts and for the purpose as set forth below for the twenty twenty-two budget year.
For council, before council, for consideration is ordinance number thirty, series of twenty twenty-one. This formally appropriates the funds that were adopted with the Resolution number twenty-seven, series of twenty twenty-one.
Any discussion by council? I'll call, I'd like to ask for a motion. Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance number thirty, series of twenty twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second any discussion? Call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you again, counsel and the finance team. Now for item E, introduction and first reading by title, only of ordinance thirty-one, series of twenty twenty-one, entitled an ordinance increasing the base rate used to calculate stormwater management fees chargeable by the city's stormwater utility enterprise.
Before council, you have ordinance number thirty-one, a series of twenty twenty-one, which would increase the stormwater fees by three percent. The rate would go from point zero zero four five two three cents per square foot of impervious surface to point zero zero four six five nine cents per square foot of impervious surface.
I would just like to say, for the benefit of the public and for council members who weren't here back, oh, it's been, what, five, six years now ago? We owe, owe the discussions on the underfunded stormwater and all of the problems that they're facing and impending lawsuits from ditch companies. Lots of discussion, lots of full rooms like this, lots of heated comments. And and a lot of that discussion revolved around decades upon decades upon decades of unfunded projects of council members that were not appropriating proper amounts of money to take care of some of these basic needs of taking care of a city properly. That's something we started to do and a big part of that conversation was getting, it showed in for the water rates, the independent analysis of recommendations, but we also had that for stormwater, too. There's an independent consultant that analyzed the suggestions of how we could get back on track with funding stormwater. And so we made some initial big jumps, but then kind of at that time, although nobody's committed today, just but we kind of made a commitment of, instead of just doing a sudden big jump to make up for years of neglect, that it would be way more prudent to just make those small incremental changes year upon year as, you know, as necessary to keep on track. I mean, still, we're really, really far behind our needs, but at least we're are keeping up incrementally year upon year of taking care of our stormwater needs. So that's just some backstory for your benefit. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate that backstory and I think it's really helpful context. I would just like to say that I'm I'm concerned in looking at agenda item H, eight H. When you look at our stormwater expenditures, we are way behind what the budget says, like where the budget says that we should be for this time of year. So like from personnel services at only fifty-six percent spent to supplies and services at only thirty-seven percent spent, all the way down to capital outlay at only nine percent spent. So I think in addition to, you know, you know, inflationary costs and kind of that three percent uptick, I'd really like to understand why why we're behind in terms of expending funds to keep up with the pressing needs that we have with stormwater and with what the city had budgeted in twenty twenty-one. And I feel like that might be a a bigger issue and a bigger conversation, but I did just want to flag that that that's pretty concerning.
So the the capital expenses for stormwater, you know, the big budgeted item for capital expenses was Rhodes Avenue project. And, you know, that that project is has been slow. So, you know, those funds will be rolling over to the next budget year. Tammy, you might want to talk a little bit about the the payment cycle for the the debt service for stormwater vac truck.
So we have our stormwater vac truck that we purchased. We received it earlier this this year and we have the payments that we're making on that. Those payments are quarterly that we we make those payments. And then we have our C O P payments, which are made twice a year. And so that payment is not reflected yet in those financials. That financial, those financials are through September. We will not have that second payment made until December for the actual C O P payment. And that's when our principal will be paid. And so the figure that we have for debt service, we should be nearly a hundred percent. It might come in at ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent. So some of those items will be paid later in the year. Also, with personnel services, what we did is we had vacant positions when we created the twenty twenty-one budget. And with those vacant positions, we did not know what health insurance those individuals would take. So we always budget for family coverage. And so if we had those individuals elect single coverage, there is a significant savings to to the city. So personnel expenses may not come in close to the budget in that. And part of it is because of the benefits.
Are you referring to those two personnel that we added to operate the the vacuum truck?
That is tr- that is correct.
And so when we approved the stormwater increase last year, that was to purchase the vacuum truck and add those two new personnel services. And it took a really long time to get that vacuum truck in, too. And so some of that, even though we may have budgeted for, you know, a full year or more or a full year or whatever we anticipated to pay those two additional personnel, they didn't get hired as soon as we anticipated, but but they're probably two of the most exciting personnel we have as far as cleaning up those tar.
There are two.
Yeah, so we've moved from one stormwater employee to three now.
Yes.
Thank you for that that explanation. That's really, really helpful. Is there a similar reason on the supplies and services why it's only at thirty-seven percent spent?
On there, I would have to look to see, they did have a large item, I want to say it was, they'd put in an additional fifteen thousand for nozzles just in case those nozzles for the new truck broke. That would not be covered under any type of warranty because it's more of a disposable item. And so there were some costs like that that they put in. We also did make some changes to the budget because of fuel costs and those type of things that weren't necessarily going to be covered from the beginning of the year. Because we did do a budget amendment in, I want to say it was early August. And we increased actually the bottom line and it was because we do not take the capital projects money and cover operating expenses. And so we did increase some of the operating line items. Like our fuel line and things like that because we did not have enough budgeted for gasoline for the vehicle. So those were some items that had that we were anticipating to come in higher based on just the usage.
But then they didn't actually end up coming in higher.
Right now, I have not seen some of that that come through.
Okay.
I think an important part of that conversation, too, is that there are two obligations with the stormwater fund and that is to meet M S four permit requirements, which is an unfunded mandate. And also just our basic infrastructure inadequacies that we want to make up for. And I think at the intent of the city council is just to do what we have to do to meet E P A requirements. But we really want to focus on taking care of the infrastructure insufficiencies that need to be addressed. Is there any further discussion? I would like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance number thirty-one, series of twenty twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you, city council. Again, thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Now on to item F. This is introduction and first reading by title, only of ordinance thirty-two, series of twenty twenty-one, entitled an ordinance amending certain water rate schedules set forth in the city's water code relative to water service provided by the Canyon City Water Department, a water activity enterprise. Travis, come back up.
I'm going to use the table.
Oh, boy.
Well, while Travis is getting settled, when we did the budget hearing, we talked about water rates and what type of increase we're going to be looking at. So you you've got two increases in here. So when you make your ordinance, you need to specify which one you want to make the, or when you make your motion, you want to specify which one you're looking at. There's a nine percent increase and a three percent increase. And I'll I'll turn it over to Travis to make the case for.
I think I should have probably included this in, but if you guys don't mind if I could pass out if you guys don't mind if I could pass out this kind of direct comparison about how it would affect each individual customer.
Yeah, Cindy will pass it out for us. Yeah, so yeah, she'll pass it out. Yeah, we we really need you to speak in the mic. All right, make your case.
So
Can you hit the button, please, Travis?
A couple of points. The first being kind of what we talked about with capital improvements. So the the water rate analysis kind of incomplete as though it was. So the water rate analysis, kind of incomplete as though it was, outlined about forty million dollars in capital improvement projects over a ten-year period. And to be able to fund those with cash rather than debt, that's where they kind of came up with those nine percent increases over what was outlined in what you guys got the first five years. So we had asked them to outline the first five years, and then we kind of reevaluate after those five years and see what is needed. The first year, I believe, was nine percent, second year was three percent, third year was a three percent, fourth year was a three percent, and now we're on to the fifth year. So we're asking for the nine percent to kind of start making up for some of those lost funds. Not only the capital projects, which we've already kind of discussed, but we have our O and M budget, we have our operations and maintenance budget. We've been doing a pretty good job of keeping up as our funds dictate. Next year is going to be much, much tougher due to some of the supply chain issues and just various other issues that we've all seen from COVID. An example of that is one of our large line items in the water treatment fund is two thirty-five, and that's our chemical fund. So best case scenario that I've got from our vendors is that's going up about thirty percent. In water distribution, one of our larger ones is two sixty. That also is looking to go up thirty percent. We only raised that one up eight percent because, you know, we just can't make all those increases all at once, that's for sure. But the point being that our O and M budgets are going up, we're going to have to do more work with less money. And so that's another big reason why we're asking for the nine percent increase.
Another aspect, pardon me, of the supplies, both chemicals and, you know, piping and things like that, is normally we have vendors that will hold the price for an entire year for us. And right now, I think we're six months, three months, maybe, for holding prices.
Yep. And so those increases could just continue to rise. A large one of those is the water distribution. Typically, like Ryan says, they will hold those prices for our repair parts, for example, for the entire year, and we can go off that P O for the entire year to just order our repaired parts. Since they won't be holding those, we may have to do individual bids for, say, fire hydrants, for clamps, for our brass, for copper tubing, things like that. So it's just going to drive up costs.
Yeah, I don't know any distributor that's holding prices right now that they're used to because it's so volatile with the market.
And so with our, you know, with our varying sizes of water mains that we have out there, we have to have parts on the shelf to be able to conduct those repairs in a timely manner. Nobody wants to see a bunch of water going down the street for two days because we can't find parts, or they're taking a long time to get in. So we really have to replenish those stores as we use them.
Any questions for Travis? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Could you speak a little bit about the capital projects that us funding this type of larger increase could go to support?
Sure. So, three of those, I could speak to for water distribution. So one of them, well, they all kind of go together. So we have kind of master plan grids to increase some of the water mains to twenty-inch to twelve-inch, and then the third one, replacement of any four-inch or less water main, and that's over kind of a forty-year period that that plant is. So it's kind of replacing old cast iron water mains with better material, so it'll be less of a like, a chance for a leak to happen. And some of that is for capacity, and some of that is for increased kind of hydraulic modeling, so we can get water to the outer sections of our distribution system easier. An example of that would be like our five million gallon tank on the east side of town. Without those transmission mains, those bigger transmission mains, it's more difficult for us to fill that tank. So that would be a good example of why we need that, those larger mains. We need that distribution grid in place.
And I know in just the maybe five months that I've been on council, I've seen several times in Administrator Stevens' reports, mentions of water mains breaking and kind of the repair costs that go on.
Absolutely.
So I'm assuming the goal is to-
So we're part of the sentry club for cast iron water mains, ductile, excuse me, ductile water mains. And that is a prideful thing because that means we've taken care of it, we have good soil and everything like that, but it's not necessarily a club you want to be a part of because that also means you have very, very old water mains in the system that can be more conducive to breaks.
I also, thank you so much for that. I also just noted in the rate study and kind of the plan of how do we build up this reserve that we need, that there were a number of recommendations that I don't think that we have fully incorporated yet, such as, you know, the municipal and golf customers included as part of the commercial customer class, and some of the other recommendations that may pass on some of these costs to people other than kind of our homeowners. So I'd love to maybe, not right now, but, you know, for future water rate increases, if we could take another look at some of those recommendations to see if there are other ways that we can incorporate them.
Absolutely. There's, you know, several different vehicles you can use for water rate increases, whether you do a single group or overall, as we're asking. As you pointed out, you know, just like the overall nine percent increases, there was some desire for more equitable cost sharing with like the golf courses, something like that, but, you know, as every council has to choose whether that nine percent or raising the golf course, whether that's fair to that person or that group, you know, the councils have made their decisions.
And on this, I mean, this study was, what, two thousand seventeen? And after that, we did raise the rates for both the governments, because there used to be for our local government, a really reduced price for water, and we decided that was not equitable, and so we raised our rates.
It's the golf course rate right now.
It's the golf course rate now?
It's the same, yeah.
Okay.
But that was actually cheaper than it costs us to produce the water.
It was or it is?
It is.
Currently?
Currently.
That's even with increases that we made back?
That is correct.
Interesting. By how much?
I think roughly it's a dollar ninety-nine per thousand, and I think that it costs us about two dollars and ten cents per thousand. My numbers could be off.
So would that require different ordinance?
I'm sorry?
Would that require different ordinance for consideration on that?
Yes.
Okay, so that might be a future discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Reed?
I just had a question, Travis. So on this sheet that you just gave us where it says monthly bill, ten thousand gallons, I get that that means per ten thousand, but is, what's the average use of a household? Is that-
So that ten thousand gallons is the average?
It is the average. That's what I was unsure.
Yes.
I've never, I admit, I've never looked at my water bill.
Yeah.
I just pay it, and I'm like, I have no idea.
I appreciate you paying it.
I went up when I got a swimming pool, and like, that's all I know. So I just wasn't sure what was-
No, ten thousand gallons is the average for residential.
Okay, and so then I'm assuming then following down below the zero to four thousands, what is a, an average, I guess, you know, storefront for a commercial, like if it was like a retailer storefront, not like-
I'm sorry, I don't have that information in front of me.
I just was trying to get an idea of like who each of these margins apply to, I guess.
Sure. I can't say that non-res would be much less, because residential, you're taking showers, you're watering lawns, that sort of thing.
That makes sense. Awesome.
So it would be less than ten thousand, but I don't have the exact number.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? I think for council, the discussion needs to be three percent versus nine percent. I'd be interested in your feedback. Reed?
So, I don't like it, but I'm leaning towards the nine because I feel like, like water is about as basic as it gets as far as a necessity. And with what we're seeing happening with the supply chain and with our vendors and those pieces, not having parts isn't enough, like, there's not an option to that. And I hope that I'm wrong, but I suspect that the thirty percent increase that we're looking at isn't the only increase we're going to be looking at. I think it's going to continue unfortunately to rise, and I would rather be ahead of that a little bit and have a little bit of padding and be wrong versus as do three and then turn around and we're in crisis over water. So my opinion would be to go ahead and do the nine.
I definitely agree with Mandy, and we give our department heads the ability to, you know, tell us what they need, and if they need nine, then we got to go nine.
Well, the fact that we've been asked to do nine for several years and we haven't been doing it, that's, that's on us. Any other comments from council?
I guess my only other comment would be, you know, I really appreciate your time and kind of the information that you've given and being able to read the rate study. I'm a reluctant, reluctantly leaning towards the nine camp as well, but I would ask that next year we have that conversation if we have water customers that are paying less than what it actually costs, like other water customers should not be bearing those costs for them. So I would just want to make sure that we have that conversation early enough in the year that if we're talking about water rate increases this time next year, we've already had that conversation and we're looking at ordinances that are a little bit more balanced.
Sure. Yeah, and like I say, we kind of, me and Kim have talked a little bit about just going ahead and redoing the whole water rate analysis because this one is a bit incomplete to go ahead and get a full one done again. Whether that's next year or not, then, you know, remains to be seen, but that's definitely part of ongoing conversations.
And, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. One of the things that we've talked about is staff is revisiting the rate study, because there are other things that were not necessarily looked at as far as, you know, development costs and impact fees and, you know, the system development fee itself, you know, basically a TAP fee. Some of those things haven't increased in more than ten years. So, you know, it's a broader discussion overall.
So inflation has doubled those already.
And, and, you know, I'm with Amy, as reluctant as I am here, I know that we need to do this, but I would like to, you know, when you get the time, you know, bring those other factors in and let us take a look at them with the golf course and that, because, you know, as a, you know, as a, I'm kind of like Mandy, I get my bill, pay it, and in fact, it's on automatic deduct, it's heck. But there's a lot of people who don't, but I don't believe any business or anything like that, you know, because they're a golf course or anything like that, should get a more better rate. And let's see what we can do to equalize with our constituents here.
Yeah. These are tough ones. These are really tough ones. We never want to increase rates.
No.
You can see why it hadn't been done for so long. It is rough. Well, with that feedback, I would like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Reed? It would be ordinance thirty-two of twenty twenty-one with a nine percent increase. So thirty-two.
Madam Mayor and council, I would like to make a motion that we approve on first reading, ordinance thirty-two, series of twenty twenty-one at the nine percent.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
The motion has approved. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
This meeting is adjourned.